All right, well, good afternoon, everyone. Before we get going, because this is being taped, I just want to, you know, make sure everyone who is watching this at any point understands that what we're about to discuss are the priority needs of the district. There may be some numbers attached to these things, but these are not requests. These are, you know, we, I know that I asked Dr. Cusco and her team to put together sort of, you know, a really good picture of what the needs are so that we can go through it always. I think it's important that the community understands that there are always more needs than what we were going to be able to afford. So, again, this is, the needs, not the requests. It's not going to indicate what the budget is going to look like. It's just something that is important to display and sort of how much is going on, what we are doing, and then what we need more on.
Yes, and for those of you who might be listening at home, we will have this, or it may already be on the website. It's called our FY26, FY27, HPS District Priority Needs. And it has our Building Bridges Together mission and vision of our strategic plan on the front cover. I'm going to walk us through, and our principals are going to walk us through, some of the needs that we've put down. I do want to start by saying that to Mr. Alfred's point, it is still early in the year. While we start the budget season very early, we still have a lot of unknowns as the year progresses related to, you know, personnel, especially at all of the costs that we share as a school community. We are very grateful to the town for having funded our teachers' contract, which we really believe will help us not just attract and retain quality educators, but also we're excited to be able to increase Taiwan Learning for Students going into next year. It's been a lot of work getting to that point, but we really do think it will pay off dividends for our students in the end. So with some of these changes and just some of the things we've had post-COVID, you know, some of the positions that we put forward in the past have been related to some of the COVID regression we saw. We are seeing an improvement in our students over time, but we still see a lot of SEL and mental health needs, even though that has somewhat declined a little bit as well. But some of the things that you'll hear us talk about tonight will be directly related to our strategic plan and the district's momentum that we're trying to do to reach some of the goals in our five-year plan. So I'll walk through, but someone on the central team might jump in if you have questions about a specific item. I'll go through each of the four arches with the central team. I'll pause at the end of the first arch, and if you have questions there, we can pass those on, and then we'll go into each school as well. So if you look under Arch One, most of the items we've put in there are really grant-funded. And if you look, a lot of the work we're trying to do is meet the needs of our ELL population and the many cultures that we have in the district. And one of the needs that we have down here that we're looking to fund through a grant this year would be pocket talk devices. And the pocket talk devices are relatively inexpensive, but they're handheld devices that we can use so that our students can translate in real time with their peers. We do have iPads and other translation devices in the district, but having something that children can use in real time and/or for parents when they come into meetings, it's an initiative that we wanted to explore moving forward. So we're going to start with a small number of those and increase that over time.
Do you have any cases in the first?
The first, in the, we have, how many do we pile this year?
We have 17.
Okay.
Four-inch school and one central office.
Does our demand exceed that supply?
Yes, right, I mean, well, demand, we're creating a need, we have a need for them. So we're trying to fill that need with getting more of them in the district. So we do believe we need more than just the small amount that we have.
What is the ELL population of the district?
Last we checked, 160, okay? 160 or 173, I forget which one, right there.
I guess that jumps out a little bit, if you're a student that isn't from a parent. Right. Yeah.
And then, as you know, we recently, among many other towns with Power School, there were some significant data breaches. We were lucky that they were minimal and didn't get into any significant data concerns. However, prior to that, we had already been working with the town to get enhanced cyber security and data privacy protection. So with the town, $10,000 of that will be funded by HPS and $4,000 by the town to help support that work going forward. We've been doing a lot of work on that in the last few years to begin with, and we're going to just continue that work.
Can we get a list of what that seems, for that type of stuff, low, in terms of dollars?
Yes. We're operating under a free Google Workspace certification suite right now, and we know Google is gradually squeezing us to the paid tiers. So I've been talking with Chris Mayo, the town IT director, quite frequently. By moving up to this tier, we can actually, one of the big features, we can pull back phishing emails. For example, Dr. Cusco, all principals over here, they all get spooked. Seems like a daily thing now. We're getting emails from staff, somebody got spooked. We can now pull those back before they hit people's inboxes. Because if we can't do that, then people are going to click the links. We already have two staff members that were compromised. And this is all independent of the Power School breach. These are our own issues.
Just a reminder, when that happens, it scares people even more.
Yeah, so we need a way to control that, and this suite gives us that. Now, it gives us a ton of Google Classroom features as well, lots of teen teaching and learning features. So we're actually talking about how to roll that out later late this spring or next fall.
Is there a list you provide of what you're actually planning, what is not?
Can you speak louder than me? Sorry.
Can you provide, so you mentioned we're going to a new Google Cloud tier essentially, right?
Yes.
What is in there and what is not? Because I think from a social security issue, we're going after anything that sounds like, hey, we should have probably went after it a while ago. Are there any things that we need to be proactive with? So, not that I'm advocating we increase that ask, but let's make sure we're aware of it. If we need to react to it, we're aware of the numbers.
Correct. This is actually the top level we can purchase. There is another Gemini level. It's insane. We priced it out today, it would be like $75,000. If we wanted Gemini integrated within our G-suite, fully integrated, that would be the cost. So we know we're not going there yet. But this, this is the top-level suite we can get with the most security features, the most privacy features, the most Google Classroom features. So, and again, we vetted all the other tiers. There's four tiers, three being the bottom. There's three other tiers. This one was minimally more than some of the other ones, and it gave us all these other features, cyber features that we need.
So under Arch Two, you'll see, if you look at each of the initiatives, that much of what we put in there to work on social, emotional well-being are things that we've either already started or are sustaining or continuing. The reason that we wanted to show this to you, to be able to answer questions tonight that you might have, particularly with newer members in the school committee, but also the uncertainty in the future, right? Some of the grants we are concerned about may be discontinued in the upcoming years. So right now, GEL has done an amazing job in working with Jess Beatty to get much of this work funded through grants in the last three to four years. However, should that change, then that might be a need that we have to fill another way in the future. So this is really informational in Arch Two here, so if you wanted to take a look at that.
If I could just ask, Mood Check, I, my understanding was I thought we moved that into the actual budget itself a few years ago, because we had been getting it from a grant. That grant wasn't ending, and I thought that, you know, one of the things when I was on the Finance Committee was that we were able to sort of get that back into the budget. So it's, we've actually been funding it through a grant? I'm just trying to...
I thought we did put Mood Check back, so I apologize. I'll have to double-check on that.
Yeah.
Can we look into that? Because in my mind, I thought we had shifted it back, but, you know, we've gone back and forth sometimes.
So Mood Check and, Mood Check and Charis Salas is funded through Jess Beatty's office, so I'll have to follow up with her on that.
But just to be clear, it's an incredibly important program, so I just...
Absolutely. So in the first piece, Mood Check and Charis Salas are funded through her office, Cartwheels funded through my office in combination. You add the three of those, that's about $80,000. In SI Two and Three and all the below, it's about another $100,000. So if you add that up and take out the other piece, about $160,000 total to all the work happening, all the other pieces. And we'll follow up the other pieces, but I think in general, if you add up, a lot of Ms. Beatty's funding comes through either some of the entitlement grants, some of the other grants that comes through, supply a lot of the work that she does through her office. Part of what we wanted to share was more of an FYI, right? A lot of the work that I'm funded through isn't necessarily work that I would say supports my work, because my work is to support their work, right? So a lot of the work that you hear when I report out is actually reported out when the principals report. So when the principals report the work that happens, a lot of the work, when they report their work, it's the work that I'm supporting. So a lot of the work here is in support of their work, right? So if down the line, the grants were to shift, if down the line, DESI were to shift their supports around SEL, mental health, around the works that it supports, around the work connected to data reporting and equity work, that's where my fear would be, right? So for me, we've been funded pretty solidly over the past three years. We've been, for the most part, been receiving the same amount of funding, but I wanted to kind of be able to share and report out that we've been receiving this funding stream for a good amount of time. It's been really, I think, in support of what the school has been supporting. So it was more of just kind of sharing that funding stream over time. We'll definitely check, you know, check with Ms. Beatty kind of how that funding's been going over time.
Yeah, so just to get an idea of, you know, the amount of money we're talking about, that potential $160,000 that they talk about in SI Number Two, you know, could be significant. We hope that we'll be able to continue to be in check. If you go to Strategic Initiative Number Five there, similarly, the data dashboard right now is being funded through a grant, and it's been a great tool that we've added this year. And again, we can maintain that right now with the grants unless something's to change. And then moving on to Arch Three, under Teaching and Learning, we've continued to do curriculum reviews each year. Joanie is looking to push out some of the curriculum reviews, just because our staff have felt overwhelmed. We were so far behind, as you know, we've talked about how the last one had been done in 2015, and now we're playing catch-up. We just purchased this phenomenal new, all these math resources, K-12. However, that comes with additional training and need, and teachers really are working hard on these new materials. So that's why she's not predicting anything new for FY26 for funds for that, but looking into FY27 to purchase materials pending some curriculum review information could be coming.
As you're looking at FY27, are you looking at some of the grants available, like PRISM for the purchase of elementary curriculum?
You have to be at certain stages. So we're active participants in implement, DESI's implement, and so you have to be at a certain point in time to qualify for those. So yes, if we are there, absolutely.
And then for the, like, social studies and digital literacy curriculum, are you looking at some of the open-source curriculum that's been created?
We will be, yes. Yep. We've been continuing to train under Strategic Initiative Number Two, under Arch Three, continuing our OG training. That's really been a great tool for our staff to have that. Many of our special educators are now able to do some of that Tier Two and Tier Three instruction with their students rather than have to have reading specialists. We love having the ability to have reading specialists, but to have our special ed teachers with the liaisons with the students be able to deliver those Tier Two and Three resources to the kids has been really phenomenal. So we want to continue to expand and train more staff in FY26.
And I would just add to that, we are going to have all our English language learner teachers OG trained also.
Could we get a breakdown of how many are trained and how many are not trained?
Yeah, we can get...
So we can look at it, so we can better assess.
Sure. We can get you, we can get you numbers for each school on that, and some have left, unfortunately, and then we have to, you know, train new people, but we can get another, an update on that number for you. And then under Strategic Initiative Number Five, where last year when we presented, we knew there was a $23,000 offset that we would have to bring into FY26 because we purchased so many curricular resources for math. And I read and I Excel help us with math, but also with ELLA. But those resources, we took a lot of our old technology resources and tried to get rid of some of the duplicated resources for this better resources. But since we were able to fund some of this through capital, now we'll be moving this $23,000 into the operating budget for FY26.
But that's already in the budget?
Is that FY26 budget, it's already built?
Sorry, already built into the, wait, yes.
Yeah. And then under Arch Three, you'll see most of this is capital. We're looking at continuing our work with Grades Five and Grade Eight, $150,000 for Chromebooks in the fall capital, and then potentially the same number would be FY27. We did get a new estimate that Dr. Jordan could speak to if needed on the auditorium lighting, coming in at $99,000, which will hopefully help us fund that with spring capital this year. We are looking to, and we talked about this in Budget Sub as well, we are looking to start to replace our exterior doors on our buildings. We have had some issues with the mechanisms there, so we really think we need to start funding those and try to spread them out over multiple years because they are costly. As Dr. Jordan indicated, $15,000 for a double door, so we're looking at capital for $75,000 for this upcoming year. And then we're just seeing increases in the need for resources at all buildings for supplies. We have really been kind of, hey, because they were robbing Peter to pay Paul and pulling from other places. We haven't really increased these line items in some time. So Dr. Jordan is looking to try to put $10,000 in each building for these materials that every year we're looking and trying to find ways to fund after the fact, because we haven't budgeted enough of them in the past.
But we increased the budget for maintenance by $40,000 before the override last year.
Did we?
Yes.
I'll have him check that.
If we need more, I mean, then, then that is not, what you're saying, my understanding was we already increased it, so...
We will definitely double-check on that. And then under Strategic Initiative Number Three, we have put this on in the past as well. We're trying to shift our model at all buildings right now. We do have one custodian that is on the Miller Placentino campus that we just were able to hire, and we're able to do different work with that position than we are at the other buildings with our staff that are part of our vendor and our contract with the vendor. So we would like to try to bring in staff that are full-time staff at the other two buildings as well, which would be a cost of $70,000 moving forward. This has been a request that Keith has put on there for a number of years, and we do believe...
Entire time on the committee?
Well, it does, it will cost us a little bit more. We're also hoping to offset some of the work that we can't get done, you know, like some of the landscaping, the DPDW on the town side helps us with mowing the grass and things like that, but sometimes just cleaning up the front of the buildings, trash removal, and pulling roots out and dead plants. Some years, the buildings have not looked that great, and we don't have the staff in-house to do that. These staff would be able to work on the custodial needs in the building, but then some of the needs out of the building as well. And then for ELL, again, this has become a need. I think, what was the number you said, increase on ELL?
Yeah, it's, it's either 178 or 172.
Actually, I apologize. I'm moving on to the next building. I'm going to pause there before we get to Placentino and just see if you have any questions about Arch One, Two, Three, or Four for Central Office.
Any more questions?
Okay. And I'll hand off to Dr. Slaney at Placentino.
So we have one strategic initiative at Placentino, and that's around increasing the teaching staff for our multilingual learners. We currently have a full-time FTE for a teacher and a .5 for a para, and this has been a growing need that I've talked to you about in, over the past couple of years, and we recently did just increase there. If you look at the data I provided, we're not even coming close to meeting the recommended instructional minutes from the Department of Ed. It's a real disservice to these students and to our whole school system when we're thinking about access for our students. Our students are incredible, and we want to be able to provide what they need so that they can reach their maximum potential like we do with our monolingual students. We currently have 16 Level Ones at Placentino. That are, that's our entry level when we look at language level coming in. We are at 34 students at Placentino, and while our number is holding steady, it's more the Level Ones and Twos that really require more instructional time and minutes that we're just not able to do with our current staffing.
Thank you. Questions?
What was the range between 15 and 17 years, or two?
Yeah, I just did a range.
And I am in a similar boat, so I am also looking to increase in that area. Jamie talked about her Level Ones. I have seven Level Ones, and I have four Level Twos, and I have approximately 30 students who are Ls. If we think about, you know, our Ls and 30 students, we've got one L teacher, whereas when we look at our special ed staff, we might have one to 12 or one to 14. We're not even close to making the minutes that we need for these kiddos. And I also have the range. We tried to do it very similar so that it looked the same. I only have five kids who are making 50% to 75% of their time, and 20 aren't even making 50% of their time, just based on the quantity of students that we have. My other need that I have down is we have need for more testing and direct services by our OT. We used to have a 1.0, and we backfilled with a CODA. We are seeing the need because of testing and the direct services that the certified OT can do, that we need to bump that back up to 1.0. And so we would shift some of the CODA hours, but we do need to, we do have an increase there based on the student demographics that we have.
And I think the need still has to be filled regardless of whether we have a full-time person. So often what we end up doing is we're paying out of our contracted services, or we're paying another way, which could be more costly. So we think it'd be more efficient to make the current model full-time.
And I don't want to get into details, but like, obviously, that would be a change for the person in the job. I mean, is that something that they...
It could be, it could be adding from another building, somebody who's part-time, but there is the, I mean, there's the cost factor to adding the .2.
But also the person being able to do that, actually, based on their...
There's, like, it's helpful we're on the same hours next year, so, you know, that might be it.
Synergies.
Would that, would it be one person between the two?
It very well could with our schools being combined. I don't know that we thought about, I mean, we're still grappling with us being on the same time. But yeah, that, that...
I'm just wondering.
Yeah, yeah, it possibly could.
Yeah, and I think over...
For one person to do it and separate the...
Yeah, and I think over time, I mean, this is our first pass of this discussion, but as we get closer to the final budget number, we always try to come up with other creative solutions. And potentially, as we look into next year, there may be some opportunities to save. We won't know that, I think, starting the year, but as the year goes on, we might be able to see if the schedules will allow us some flexibility since the two campuses will be at one time. Moving on, Ms. Manning.
Moving on to Rams. So one of the things that we're asking for is under Arch Two, the social and emotional well-being on the Dean of Students. And this is a similar position that we've been asking for, identified as a priority from 21 to 25. So it's been a consistent ask. It was a position that was cut in 2012 where there were 3.5 FTEs that were never reinstated. And, you know, our model at the middle school is similar to the elementary school, but our needs are very different. The high school model, under this sort of umbrella of administration, is, you know, they have two assistant principals and then the campus monitor. We just have the one assistant principal. Our kids are super high in curiosity, but they're low in decision-making. That's developmentally appropriate for middle school kids, and I love that about them, but we have a need that we still need to fill from these cuts in 2012. We have challenges, you know, all over the place with data, behaviors, supporting students, supporting teachers, logistics and operations. So, you know, I think the benefit to the, to the community would be, there would be fewer serious consequences, more time on learning. There would be this sort of like focus on curriculum instruction and evaluation for teachers, where a dean could kind of take care of some of the lower-level behavioral needs and operations that we face on a database.
Did you provide us with a job description for this at some point?
I did. Did we provide a job description of this at some point?
Do you don't think we fully fleshed that? Do you feel like that would be helpful to kind of understand fully what you're looking for this person to do and what kind of behaviors and issues you're looking to address with this person? Maybe they had one from 2012, that's before I was on the committee, so I don't have that.
Yeah, I have a similar question. I was like, looking at supporting behaviors or SEL needs, doing our special development team, talk about why this role wouldn't fit within like another adjustment counselor? Like, why is it in the administrative role?
I think the operations piece really is the, is the turning point. So we have a lot of things that need to be supervised at, at our level, so we have buses, lunchways, hallways, events, and that kind of goes above the scope of what's in an adjustment counselor's job description. The low-level behaviors and catching those early, it is some of the social, emotional stuff, but it's also just this, like a low level for decision-making that happens that may tie us up for, for hours a day, that having somebody to kind of handle those things in, in a way that's like at an administrative level and can be sort of kept track of in our PBIS systems and our multi-tiered support systems. So it's like the first responder kind of to branching kids out, maybe to an adjustment counselor for a plan or something to that effect. Does that make more sense?
Yeah, I think I'm still wrapping my head around the four administrators for a school of this size, so I'm just kind of looking for a little one.
It would just be three. Well, Tessa, our SSA doesn't do any of this sort of interaction with the kids. She does the special education aspect. So I think comparing, like, we're on an elementary model with the current model that we have. We don't need to be on a high school model, but I think we need to be on a middle school model. And I can definitely...
Can you give us comparatives of other districts that have a something similar?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to throw one question out there. I think I know the answer, just knowing our data gaps, but going back to pre-2012, post, like, do we have any data to support with the elimination of this role back then created more issues?
I mean, you could probably make a correlation, but the, the kids, having been in public education for 30 years, like, the kids are completely different.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, so I think we could...
It is a long time ago, so...
We could probably connect something with data, but I don't know if it would be...
I guess if you have any data over the last few years to show it's getting worse, right? That might help.
In 2012, did we have the principal, assistant principal, three school counselors, and adjustment counselor then as well? Like, was it the same structure when we had the Dean of Students?
Can't hear you, honey.
Oh, okay. So in 2012, at the time the Dean of Students was cut, did we have an assistant principal and three school counselors and an adjustment counselor and an SSA and a principal? Like, did we have that whole structure in place then? Or did we move some of these roles?
The only thing I don't know is the adjustment counselor. I do know that there were three counselors, one for each grade. There was an AP. There was a principal. There was an SSA at that time. And I believe there was a, a grant-funded social worker to start with way back when, which they eventually, I think, rolled into getting, I mean, you would know more, but I think that's...
You got it. I think to the point that we also, you know, this is true, that we keep hearing more and more parents saying this, children are being bullied. Much of the time, those bullying allegations are not accurate because they don't meet the definition of bullying. However, the commitment to the time of that investigation is what we're seeing a lot, which is why counselors can't do that work. That really falls on the purview of administrator and goes into after-school and phone calls to parents. That's just one example. There are other investigations, but I feel like that's one that we see increasing quite a bit as well.
Yeah, bullying investigations, even just like the question of it means we, we open one, you know, and there are legal fees and consultant fees associated with anything that's potentially bullying harassment or Title IX. So as these sort of events happen and we even have to investigate them, whether or not we make a finding or determination that says it was true, we still have to do the And then I've also requested a 1.0 FTE, special education bridge teacher for Rams. It's, it will fill a critical gap and create equity across the district. We are one out of the four schools. We're the only school without a bridge program. It's in our continuing... It's in our continuum, the HPS continuum sort of offerings. There are cohorts at each building, there's a cohort at our school right now in seventh grade, and we have an incoming sixth grade that has another cohort, which would increase our students who would need to be in that continuum to about twelve or thirteen. And what we do now is we spread those kids across the continuums that we currently have, which is really stretching those special educators. The bridge description is supposed to be like a partial inclusion with sub-separate support, so these are really kids that have like academic, social, vocational needs and the potential for a five-year graduation track. With the absence of that at the middle school, we're really sort of disservicing these kids and also impacting our graduation rate potentially. The eligibility is our SLD kids, language disabilities delays, but the social and adaptive skills can be on par with peers, which means we want them in the inclusive classrooms as much as possible, so it's just a separate program. And it would, at this point, just require one special educator to fill that need.
And you want to, you know, as I mentioned earlier, it is early budget process, and there's still a lot of uncertainty, we're only been here. But we also will be looking district-wide at enrollment and if there are any shifts that we can make to fill some of this. So right now, this would be in new position, but we, we will look as we continue on throughout the year to see if any of these needs can be filled with existing staff shifting from other places based on enrollment, which we do every year.
And then the final need is a math tutor. And this has been recommended by the math study group, and it's key to closing the gaps that we have in math education. So currently, we have over fifty students that are two to four-plus years below grade level at math in grades six to eight, and only a point-five math interventionist. So to date, the challenges that we face, she's only seen sixteen students to make these targeted interventions because she has a cap of twelve, can only see students once a week for twenty-eight minutes. That's just based on our schedule. If we had a math tutor, we sort of envision like a math lab where we could be increasing numbers of students that were seen and making more significant gains. We are making really great gains. We have the students that are seeing making seventy to three-hundred-and-seventy points growth. Each one-hundred points is a grade level. So imagine the impact of managing that with another math tutor. And it could also sort of, like, create a space for kids who might be looking for some acceleration in their math skills in this math lab area.
Karen, did you say just fifty kids that are two to four years? Is that what you said?
And these are kids that are not previously identified and kids, students that are not on IEPs or in continuums.
Outside of IEPs.
Outside of IEPs, yes.
Yeah.
Additional questions, Karen?
So I'm just gonna continue along the same line that Karen just talked about with the need for some, some specific math supports, math tutoring. We're seeing, when you look outside of students with IEPs, you're looking at, you know, somewhere, depending on the diagnostic of the week, and when that happens, the right twenty to twenty-five percent of students are not making for a level yet. We are seeing growth, we do have the interventionists coming in with building the tier-one supports in the classrooms. One of the problems that we have with our current schedule is you have four periods, you can't, where do you, where do you intervene? So what we have to look at is specific math support that's gonna happen, that has to happen during a math period. And sort of have something like a math lab or a math tutor would really allow us to build those supports with, with what we have. It is a challenge that we face because we do have our interventionist, but they're not solely dedicated to math, they're STEM across the board, and there's the person of the humanities, but we're seeing a really big need in building those math supports. So that's why we are also asking for some support with, with a tutor, just what we already have with the ADC. The difference with the ADC, just for those who don't know, the ADC is supporting kids who have long-term absences, which they might come in and that person's working across, really organizing all of their work with them, supporting those students who are coming in from hospitalizations or who are, who need to be supports that are sort of more, more long-term needs. But that's why we're also asking for the, the math tutor there.
We all know that DSB is, is not as structured as it needs to be to get students support like they should, so there is a main program that exists called the Litching Students that works for Power School that will allow us to schedule students, and they can be scheduled by teachers ahead of time, or students can be scheduled with cell phones, that will be able to actually track and get some data on sort of the usefulness of DSB and where students are each time, wherever they are assigned. Right now, it's connected to a period, but that, it's not getting too technical, but it's really hard to track the usage of that time for students, which is what'll help us do that.
When we, not going with the actual schedule, but with the X block, we're potentially introducing. So if we don't have this though, what will we use for X block?
Sir, we, we need, we need something.
Okay.
To start tracking that, these flex blocks. It's some, it's, it depends what school, there's some X, some flex, some whatever you call it, but we need something to help track students during those flexible schedule times. The next piece here, we are seeing an ever-increasing amount of students who are accessing the nurse and need nurse supports. And right now, we have a point-four long-term sub, we'd like to have a point-five permanent extra, you know, so we have one-point-five nurses. That would allow us at least to have two, four, two nurses in the building for at least half of every day. Right now, we have somebody who comes in for two days a week, gets some extra support, but we'd really like to expand that to support students because it is just, it's constant. But I've asked Nurse T to start pulling up some of the data, but it is more and more every year that she's happy to work with, so we just need some extra supports there. And I think that's in line with like the rest of the schools as well.
What is the guideline that is supposed to be?
That I don't know.
I should know it.
Brenda didn't mention it.
Yeah.
I, I forget it at the moment, but we have met.
It was like one to, one to four hundred or one to something, we're well beyond that.
When you get.
We're not, we don't.
When you get, when you get over five hundred, you have to increase FTEs, and I believe it's every one hundred is a point one. I'm not, don't quote me, but I think that's.
I know, I'm not, I'm not saying the number because.
I think six hundred is a one-point-one, seven hundred, I, but don't quote me on that because I have to relook at it on the most recent, but I'm pretty sure that's something of a formula. And right now, because it's an LTS, we are able to use in the grant. I would be removing, in Y26, I put that we were potentially looking at fifty percent grant, fifty percent operating, but if it becomes permanent, we really can't use the grant for that, we would use the grant for other needs.
And just the final piece here, it's looking at increasing our performing arts team from, you know, this point-seven-five position to a one-point-oh. We have a really difficult time trying to hire anybody. I think we had a total of four applicants last year, and all four of them got jobs that were full-time, not part-time. We were very lucky to find, you know, we had a, somebody who's going to be our building sub, who, who has a background in music and has stepped in. But in order to really support the core programs of the performing arts, it would be great to be competitive with, with the job and have a full-time position to be able to list.
And historically, that wasn't full-time.
That was historically, yes.
Yeah, I've got the answer to your question.
Oh, thank you.
It says, according to DESI, recommended nurse-to-student ratio is generally one full-time equivalent FTE-registered nurse for every two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred students with an additional point-one FTE added for every additional fifty students beyond five-hundred.
Yeah, I said a hundred, it's actually fifty. So a one-point-five would get us pretty close to that.
It would get us closer to best practices guideline.
So Mr. List, do we, under the current high school schedule, do we have the, I guess, the course demand to expand the course teachers?
Yeah, create, so we don't have, I mean, we would have the course, we would like to be able to expand the performing arts offerings. We just don't have the FTE to do so under the current schedule. But it's also, yes, under the current schedule, it's hard to build those courses out.
So you know, it's more of a, it's a cart for the horse, a chicken and the egg, you don't know necessarily if you're gonna have, I think you should have the demand, but you don't necessarily.
Well, I think, I think we have, also, we have, so it's, it's very smart schedule because of, well, going back in the step, I thought I had one night away. Ah, no, it's basically, we have the demand for classes, it's when we can fit those classes in based on the current schedule and the FTEs. So it's a.
But if we open up the schedules to allow for that, we wouldn't have enough FTEs.
Then we would not write, then we would write.
And when was that reduced student? The one to point-seven?
Predates me.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we had to shift.
Right, yeah, oh, yeah.
I, my concern is that it's been kind of a revolving door, and I think the feedback that I've heard from students is that, like, why bother? Because they're, they can't invest in the program because the person who's there isn't gonna stay, and that's a concern. So how do you build a full program through a high school if you lose your, your performing arts teacher every six months or a year?
And that happened last year.
Yeah, I know.
For a full-time job.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so.
It is tricky, and then students also will tell you that they don't want to miss other offerings during DSB, having classes, so, you know, it's, it's a little bit of both, and it is problematic, and it would be wonderful if you could expand our program. So that gets us through our list of priority needs. If you look at the last page, this is our 2025 current class sizes and the number of sections we have by grade level, that Dr. Joy put together for us, and then our projected class sizes based on this year's currents. So you, you will see some areas where we have some lows and highs, and each year, we look at that, and in some cases, we shift a teacher up or down, wherever the need is, we do that, just, that's an annual thing we do as a leadership team together. We also will look to see if there's any offsets in enrollment that will allow us to shift a position to one of the needs that we have on the priority list as we get closer to the end of the year. And that's something we do each year as well.
Is our second grade small? This is, if I look at grade this year, grade three, enrollment one, nine, next year drops to one, two.
It's because, the way that that's written is the current number of teachers in those grades for this year.
Okay.
So if you look, some numbers look really high in class size and some look really low. So as Dr. Koscas says, those are the current FTE in each grade level. What we will do once our, we figure out the enrollment shifts, is then we recalibrate those numbers.
I didn't realize there was such a second grade class.
I think what you're.
Well, it's because you went up a teacher in third grade.
Where's Montessori one and two, or K through two?
We're not currently default.
No, where, where are the numbers?
They're here. See where it says Montessori sixty-eight?
Oh, those are the, those are the ages.
It is two-grade level.
Sorry, that's, it's a, they call it that, it's the H grade, yeah.
Right, okay.
But Frank, same, kind of your question, Jamie was saying, like, and Susan and I talked about this, how we would show the two, want to show you what would happen if that same class moved up to the next year, would we just acknowledge that teachers potentially move, and those are something like that?
Within licensure?
You know, the, but all the principals are well aware of those situations that might, might occur.
So looking at, looking at grade three and four, I'm gonna shift that one.
Section to four.
Hopefully, to four, because that will cover that bubble that's moving through there.
Yeah, and when it's just in the same building, it's not considered a transfer.
Right.
But we do try to, you know, see if there's someone that's interested first, but it isn't really considered a transfer. If we move a building, then we have to look for involuntary transfers first, and then we would go to involuntary. But in the building, for the idea, principals have some discretion over that based on needs of students.
For example, we talked last year a lot about the bubble that moved, the group that moved from fifth grade to sixth grade. That group will move, and that's why you see in sixth grade, eight teachers instead of ten, and then, you know, when moved on to the next year, you'll see that kind of highlighted area specifically for, for that next group. That's why it's showing twenty-five point-eight in sixth grade, eighteen point-two, really we would move that set of, those set of teachers.
Gotcha.
Which no one loves to do, but the reality is, we have to deal with the, the students in front of us and how to meet their needs. I can recall when I taught elementary, going from first to third to fourth, and in my last year, they were moving me to fifth. So the smaller the building, that happens even more frequently, but we try to avoid as much as possible.
I guess I'm concerned with high schools and state boards, future classes, we're gonna have much more.
So that concludes our priority needs, unless you have further questions that you'd like us to answer.
Can you kibbitz for a little bit?
Yeah.
Other questions, or do you guys have anything else you'd like to add? What's that? Well, so, so I guess we can walk, we can walk through the process from here, because in what Dr. Koscas.
So we talked yesterday in budget sub, I know the town would like our, they like to have our number, whether they can meet it or not, that the school committee will vote on, but they like to have my estimated budget number, they would like it by February fourteenth. So we currently have our budget presentation scheduled for February twenty-seventh, which has been similar the last, since I've been here, it's been late February we've done it. But I did talk to Diane and Dawn and Frank yesterday about moving it to February thirteenth, since we have a meeting that night. So David and I are gonna work on putting together the presentation with all of the Part One, Two, and Three, and the priority needs. We will go back with the principals and see if we want to adjust and rethink any of the priority needs. We're certainly open to feedback from you, if you, if there are things that you've seen here that you would like us to prioritize less, I guess, if there's something that you, we will, you know, come together and decide if there's things that we still need to move forward for the budget presentation. But some of this, by that point, we may actually take off and rethink as well. But I do want to get that done February thirteenth, just to get that number at least out there to the public and the town.
So Dr. Koscas, the unenviable sort of job of doing the first cut of the budget, because obviously, as you get further along in the budget process, you know more and you can, you can whittle it down. But the schools are unique in town in that, so there are four tiers to sort of the budget process in the town side, and everyone can tune out now as I get my findings hat on. But anyway, the tier-one is normally the department request, which is usually of the voted with the board or the department head working with the town administrator, because our process is a little longer, because we have a larger budget. We use the superintendent's budget, even if our, the request will be, our official sort of board's request will be different in the future. And so in order to get it to, as part of the budget package that's gonna go out with the town administrator, recommended budget, we, he needs it sooner rather than, than later.
And then you'll usually vote in March, so we can get it into the paper, the Marcher?
Yeah, something, late March, early April.
I think it's late March, yeah.
Oh, we voted, and then there's a budget hearing, yeah, a few weeks, a couple, a week, a few weeks later.
And then it has been the town warrant.
Right. The other thing we need to talk about, I know there's, there's an email that went out today, but actually, this isn't really on our agenda, but as far as we do need to discuss at some point, the state, the governor's budget came out, and that's disappointing and, and, what's that? I'll have to go look, I don't think, it may have been higher than the initial governor's cut from last year, but not from where we ended up, I don't think. So we'll have to go back over that and see how we wanna, what we wanna do with that. But we're still January.
Thanks, everybody.
So at this point, because we did post them separately, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and then we will reconvene for our next meeting at seven o'clock, so. That is a misprint, if you look at the top, the budget's actually, it's actually posted for seven, so we can't, if we couldn't, we'd say something hung over from.
It does say around seven.
It does say approximately.
The official posting, seven, yeah. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right. By favor?
Yeah.
All right, we adjourned at five fifty-five. Dawn, if you would turn us off and then get us ready for the seven o'clock. All right, Dawn, we'll get started. Good evening. Welcome to the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five regular meeting of the Holliston School Committee. We will get right into things. We have the consent agenda with some, some gifts and warrants. Does anyone have any, any changes for any of that stuff? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. All right, all's fair. Thank you. Reports from our student rep.
So we can start on sale for student-directed one-acts. They are on February seventh and eighth track. Senior night for girls is tomorrow. Girls' track won their relays, and boys' basketball had their first sweep, like varsity, JV, and freshmen all won. Thirty-seven people competing, competed at, um, DECA districts are going to states, and the other day, there was a service learning community event, and that's where students that took this service learning elective had the chance to present their projects to the community. And tomorrow is finals, and so is Monday.
Good luck.
Thank you.
School, we got.
Just a couple things. There is a concert, Rams, the Lord of Man, Winter Concert, two right, that we, that we, high school. It's also a film service night. PT, I believe, is hosting Tuesday, February fourth, Massachusetts, high school. And another thing, I have this town show that's coming up, uh, February tenth at Rams and the eleventh at high school. It's a pretty cool, um, kind of community building, empathy building, exercise, and students and some staff, volunteers, participants.
Just real briefly, I was looking out to the county service learning night, um, last night, and see some of the projects that our students have put together, um, projects on renewable energy. There was a project on unified theater. I know we've heard about the unified basketball program, but I thought that was another outstanding project. And our state rep was here as well last night to learn more about the students' projects. We have a mock trial team at the high school, I think for the first time in many years, and they competed last Wednesday, and will compete again tomorrow. And then, as for girls and boys, indoor track competed at the Massachusetts Division Four State Relay Meet last weekend, and the girls for the second year did take first place. Friends?
Um, and, and I do not have anything tonight. So at this point, we'll move on to, to public comment. We have public comment in the room. If there's anyone online that would just speak, if, they could use the raise hand function, just so I can call on them after we take the public comment from the room. But first hand, if you'd like to come up.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at public comment. I've done this before, and I'm a little nervous tonight, a little, lot going on with school and finals, getting ready for finals, so I don't have my thoughts all together. But I have a lot to say, and obviously, it's about the math leveling, and so I just, I'll, I'll give a little history of myself. Ann Cannoli, eleven thirty-five Highland Street, a lot of, I know a lot of the people on the school committee. I know that Dawn and Cynthia, you've had your children come through the school, and you know, you know the process of where we've been and where we're going. I've lived in town for thirty-seven years. I've been employed by the Holliston Public School for about twenty-five. I've held many roles during my tenure here at Holliston Public Schools. Math teacher, math and business department leader, and assistant principal. I have volunteered for many committees over the years. I come here tonight as a parent, community member, and a math teacher. Our daughter is entering, entering sixth grade in the fall, and we want to ensure that she has access to the best, the best education possible that meets her needs. This includes all subjects, but tonight I will focus on math. And I just want to say that being a math teacher in Holliston Public Schools is really challenging, because we hear so much, it's always about math, it's always about math, what we don't do right, what we do wrong, what we can do better, and it doesn't just come from the community, it comes from a lot of different places, and it's hard. And I think that people need to stop and think about that. And I want to thank Hillary, I just met her tonight, but I really want to thank her, because last week, at the last committee meeting, and I'm paraphrasing what you're saying, obviously, I, my brain is not in a good spot, but I'm paraphrasing what you said. What I heard you say was you were asking the math teachers to accomplish many tasks at this time and at all at once, and you listed off, I think, five things. I can't even list them off, even though I'm doing them every day. And adding more is not a good idea, and that is a fact, that is a fact. We are working so hard to teach our students, which is number one, bring on this new curriculum, trying to have common assessments, trying to do vertical alignment, trying to differentiate as best we can, and it's hard. And the other thing I want to say, and I, talking to a couple guidance counselors, is that if you have not been in the classroom since COVID, and this isn't a COVID excuse, this is just, kids are just different. It's not they're better, it's not they're worse, it's just they're different, and their requirements are just different. So I'm gonna leave it at that as far as what's happening, but I really want to thank Hillary for recognizing those things. A little background information, I've participated in the last Math Curriculum Review Committee, which was when the new framework came out in two thousand and eleven, and I think we worked on that for like three years, a three-year process. We realigned everything. For those of you who may not know, we used to have so many math classes, we used Chicago Math Series, there were so many different math, we, we, we put it down to a, a more, a more of a flow for other, like other school districts. And then we had leveling, we brought back leveling, we followed the DESI guidelines. If you want to accelerate math, if you want kids, all kids, to have access to calculus, you have to have acceleration points. And DESI puts out three pathways. I have all that information I could share with the school committee, if you're not familiar. One of the pathways is that you level in seventh grade, and in seventh grade, you're able, seventh and eighth grade, you're able to get through the seventh and eighth grade standards and some of the algebra. If you level in seventh grade, you get through enough algebra that kids can go and take Algebra II. If you, those kids that are in honors algebra. If you do not level math in seventh grade, the algebra class cannot get enough standards covered for kids to go to Algebra II. I know Ron Taylor said that last week. That is not true. You can't, you, you don't have those standards, and I have that all laid out. So I just want people to be aware that, when we did the last curriculum review, we were very thoughtful as to what we did. I know I'm on a, a timeframe. Okay. So I, I watched the last school committee meeting last week, and I was, I was surprised that the math study group was all of a sudden, was already, was already reporting their findings. I wasn't surprised that they wanted to de-level. It, it, it wasn't surprising to me. And this is where I'm gonna be really honest about what happened in the math curriculum review, and I know that individually, teachers came and spoke to school committee members, but we were concerned and scared about our jobs, to be honest. But I'm gonna be honest, because this is how I feel. In the fall of two thousand and twenty-three, a math curriculum review committee, we established, we, it consisted of thirteen math teachers, K to twelve, three curriculum specialists, Ron Taylor, assistant principal, math background, David Keim, and Joni Menard. We met at least monthly to gather information, do a traditional curriculum review. We spent several meetings discussing the pros and cons of leveling seventh and eighth grade, every meeting. David was involved in a lot, Joni was involved in a lot. A lot of meetings came back to it. On October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, there were fifteen members in attendance. Two people, Joni and James, didn't vote because they thought they shouldn't. We voted on what we wanted to do was leveling. We unanimously said that we want to continue leveling, and we want to bring seventh grade leveling back. At that point, there was some heated discussions. David Jordan suggested that we anchor the group in research. The next meeting, we did that. We did a chalk talk. We have all those notes from chalk talks. And then on December twentieth, Dr. Kuska came to our meeting, and there was only nine members there, and it was decided that there wasn't enough members there to continue the vote, so that we would just, we'll just delay leveling until the fall. And that we would, that we would put together a study group to talk about all courses and all leveling. Fast forward to the springtime, it was only the math study group. There wasn't all the different levels. So it's really concerning to me that this happened, and I'm here, and I'm passionate about this. I'm passionate for all the work I've done in my career here. I'm passionate for the students coming forward. And I just really think I'm gonna ask the school committee to really slow down on these decisions and get information from everybody, not just the people that are on the, that were on that committee. That committee consisted of five members, Joni, Jamie Slaney, Ron Taylor, Carla Kraus, who is a STEM coordinator at Rams with, as a science teacher, and Lear Barton, the STEM coordinator at the high school, who is a biology teacher, and I think Sarah Dorian was the only math teacher on that committee. One of the biggest problems I have, and I just found out this past week, was that one of the people on the committee was tasked with putting together a flow chart as to what happens in eighth grade to the high school, and the high school did not have an opportunity to vet that flow chart. And there's a lot of misinformation on that, and it's just really concerning that this stuff is happening. And I'm sorry if I've offended people. It's not about the people, it's about the positions, and I'm a, I'm a community member too, and I have a parent in the school, and I really wish the school committee would just hold off and give more opportunity to this discussion. And I'm sorry if I've overstepped my bounds, but that's how I feel.
Thank you.
And I'm not the only one. There's a lot of other math teachers that if you speak to, I'm sure they would feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone on the Zoom? I thought I saw a hand.
Yes.
Sean wants to speak, okay. Sean, go ahead. Hold on, we gotta.
Can't hear.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm sick, so I apologize in advance here. So I'm Sean Bilado. I'm the high school band teacher, music teacher. I'm here to publicly state for my colleagues and for the members of our community that I was involuntarily removed from the HHS Scheduling Committee by union leadership as retaliatory measure for voting in favor of advancing a schedule framework recommendation. The frameworks that HFT leadership has subsequently put forth are regurgitations of schedules that the committee has previously determined are either not attainable or would actually further deepen disparities and widen learning gaps. These are the very issues that prompted us to look at schedules in the first place. Over the months of work on the committee, it has become apparent to me that union leadership lacks empathy, communication skills, and drive to work collaboratively to create an environment where all students can thrive. In their own words, this is about power, not about students. Union leadership purposely withheld part of the recommendation to the Federation in order to fit their narrative. Most disheartening to me is that during the meet, during our meetings, union leadership voiced that the needs of students, particularly those with IEPs and 504s, should not factor into the schedule because they are, in fact, a minority. So why should we up, upend everything for a few? Union leadership took the same view towards colleagues and subjects who were also advocating for change to better support their students' educational needs. In pursuit of these viewpoints, union leadership threatened me with consequences for having conversation with, conversations with colleagues so that I could gain a better understanding of their needs and advocate for that. Union leadership's behavior during our meetings was quite frankly embarrassing. I was squashed, shushed, and silenced for attempting to get people to listen to one another. Union leadership stormed out of meetings when things did not go their way. We want students to treat each other with respect, especially when working through tough issues, and there was a clear lack of good modeling on that front. Though I was warned by union leadership that there would be consequences if I did not fall in line, at the end of the day, I had to do what I needed to do to be able to look at myself in the mirror, knowing that I did what I could for our students because they deserve it. I sincerely hope that as that committee moves forward, they are able to work collaboratively for the benefit of all. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Sean. Is there anyone else on Zoom who? No hand raised? All right, if you, I'll give one more opportunity if someone else who's on there wants to raise their hand to make public comment?
There's an icon over there.
But no hand raised, or?
No hand raised, no name.
Okay. So, um, thank you very much, and we will, we'll move forward into our presentations.
We have a student presentation tonight?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, there she is.
Yes, civics. Sorry.
Mr. McLeod's gonna put it up for you. So if you want to come up to the mic, and then he can advance the slides for you if you just let him know. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't see you.
You can come, yeah, wherever you feel comfortable. Hello. My name is Amelia Holmes. I'm a junior here at Holliston High School. I tend to speak quickly, so if I'm talking too fast, just please let me know and stop me. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Okay, so first off, I'm part of the Global Citizens Program, and I'm sure you all know that, what that is, but it teaches students how to be active participants in their local and global communities. So part of this project entails completing a service project, and for mine, I'm responding to a need of the community, the state of Massachusetts, and even nationwide for increased civic education. You can click this slide. Okay. So why is it important to engage students in civic education at HHS? Well, given the current political climate of the United States, it is becoming increasingly important to cultivate engaged, informed, and passionate citizens. Next slide. However, recent generations are showing a heightened sense of political fatigue. Cambridge researchers collaborated with the Human Surveys Project in almost every global region and found that among eighteen-to-thirty-four-year-olds, satisfac, satisfaction, satisfaction, excuse me, with democracy is at its steepest decline. One cause of this is democratic backsliding. Democratic backsliding is when democratic governments begin to erode through restrictions on rights and participation. Because of this, in the United States, young people are voting less, they're rejecting party affiliations, and they're expressing disillusion with the government and research data. However, this does not mean young people don't care about civic issues. I ran a survey last spring, asking students about their political awareness, and only five out of sixty-six of the participants indicated that they had no issues that concerned them on a national and global scale, and only ten of sixty-six had no concerns at a local level. Young people still have issues that concern them, and that should be addressed and taken seriously, which could be accomplished through a high school civic curriculum. On top of democratic backsliding, a UN global, global survey found that seventy-six percent of respondents under thirty think politicians do not listen to young people, another reason for the high numbers of political fatigue. By allowing students to solve real-life problems and engage in their community, we can show them they have more power and autonomy than they think. Go to the next slide. So how do we engage these students? Civics is a required class for all eighth graders in Massachusetts, and while there is no requirement for high school, students are required to fulfill a civic action project during their high school career. You can go to the next slide. At Holliston High School, this project currently lives in the foundations class, which is a freshman year requirement, and this civics action entails, by defined in the two thousand and eighteen History and Social Science Curriculum Framework, is to develop civic knowledge, skills, and dispositions. A civics action project should be taught by teachers of the Social Studies Department with a civic-centric course, within a civic-centric course, in order to successfully engage students in the subject matter and the problem they've chosen to address with their project. The issue with the existing civics education is that it's often, it often occurs through discussion rather than participation. The sentiment among civics education experts is that a high-quality civics education is incomplete without teaching students what civic participation looks like in practice and how citizens can engage in their communities. That's why the style of a service learning curriculum would be the most beneficial for Holliston High School students. Service learning is an existing course at the high school, and while it is required for members of the Global Citizens Program, it is not a current requirement for all. I took this class. through Holliston High School. And then I have a graph on the next slide that represents, so basically what I was saying about it being more about discussion than participation. The dark blue indicates like how many of surveyed 12th grade students have not done this thing, and the lighter it gets, the more that they've done it. So as you can see, the more frequent activities include discussing current events, giving a presentation, taking class, or taking part in debates or panel discussions, while the least likely is to write an actual letter to give an opinion or to help solve a problem. That's it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Just as a point, we did discuss a lot of policy about graduation requirements, and there was a discussion around civics. But there'll be more to come with David List is going to be presenting about his recommendations to the changes to the handbook, reflecting graduation requirements and credentialing and all that. And part of it would be that if we were at something like civics, it would have to be like for the, an incoming class, so probably, what is it, 2028? The earliest would be like class of 2028 to do something like that.
Did you also discuss anything, like, gone to your power and service learning type?
We didn't specifically, we didn't get specifically into that. Yeah, he said he was going to be presenting for us to share about that, but we were talking about things like because of MCAS, and then also just talking about classes that we know that are not really supporting students as we need them to. And so he was going to present on that. And also about civics, which was part of our discussion. So thanks for bringing up that.
I guess outside of requirements, though, policies or anything to open pathways for students to get engaged without being, like, policy definitely is one-way requirement, but for students that want to get involved, it seems like there is a misunderstanding of what, how to get involved, or lack of ability to directly get involved and participate.
I think really moving to make sure that the civics requirement is met by all students is important, and we are, we have moved towards that direction. And I think that really would be better served not by policy, but by program of studies. Mr. List is trying to see that. You'll see some potential changes that he'll be putting forth this year. The student mentioned the foundations course. It is a little bit outdated as it is, so this is an opportunity potentially to shift some of those courses and update them to make sure we are covering that information. Unless, if we just start doing it through policy, it actually slows down the process where Mr. List can do this, he can present to you.
It'd be great to gauge how interested you are, don't know how to, or are limited in getting involved before we make it a requirement. Because then it becomes, yes, they're getting it done, but the energy and positivity may not be there.
We are required, though, to do it in, in intent, right? So we are.
It could be a term course, doesn't have to be like a semester-long or year-long class. So like elections is up, for example, example, is an elective class you could take.
Okay.
I think the opportunities for public speaking as a result of these courses is also a huge need for our students, and they've done such, you know, speaking of the service learning last night, they do such an awesome job by having those opportunities, and this allows more students to have those opportunities.
Okay, great. Sean? And so you're on here twice in different places, but what I think we do is you can give your first presentation, and then we'll pull up the new business for the, for the trip to allow you to do all of your stuff, and if you want to leave, then you can.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you. Hi, everybody. I'm Sean Frost. If we haven't met before, I am an English teacher up here at the high school. And I shared an impact report that Megan Burke shared with me. She's a 2020, sorry, a 2017 Holliston High School graduate. And she attended Villanova, and while she was an undergrad, she started working on a nonprofit organization called Where Queros. And since then, Megan and I have partnered in a variety of ways. I shared some of the highlights of that partnership in the Where Queros 2024 Impact Report with Susan and David List and a few others. And that's what leads me here tonight, because Susan invited me to share with all of you. So this is really lovely and wonderful for me to share, because I've been an English teacher up here at the high school for 20 years, which affords me the special experience of seeing students four years out of high school, five years out of high school, 10 years out of high school, 20 years out of high school, and have maintained those relationships. And some of them have really gone off to do some amazing things and have kindly returned to Holliston to partner with Holliston. And so that waiting time of allowing students to graduate from Holliston, go to college, establish their careers, and then make their way back is something that I think comes with longevity when you've been a teacher in the system for a while. So I just want to tell you a little bit about how Holliston High School has partnered with Megan and the community. So first of all, Where Queros, the word cueros is a play on the word sane insanity. And the mission of Where Queros is to make clothing and embroider clothing for people who might benefit from some sensory stimulation and clothing that provides either discreet or more apparent soothing patterns. And the inspiration for Where Queros came from Meg having a family member who was going through some challenges. And it started with Meg embroidering a patch on her sibling's item of clothing, and then finding at a lot of hospitals, there were patients who did not have personal clothing and only had hospital gowns. And so Meg started donating a lot of the embroidered clothing to hospitals throughout the state and throughout the region. And there was an explosion of response. Meg has presented at the Nursing College at Boston Colleges, and she is a paid consultant to visit high schools throughout the state. We're very fortunate, because I have a strong relationship with Meg, and she's come to Holliston for free on multiple occasions with a Starbucks bribe, and that's about it. So we took a little drive through Starbucks, and she and I have that relationship, so I've been really lucky to be able to have her in as a guest speaker. So I'm just going to pass around the impact report, so you can take a look. This is a hard copy, and I know it's been shared with you as well. And I'll be brief at this point. But first, the Beautiful Mind Campaign, which the school committee approved when Meg was a sophomore 10 years ago at Holliston High School, a little over 10 years now, partnered with Where Queros and HDAC, that's the Holliston Drug and Alcohol Awareness Coalition. Thank you. So we had community, we had Where Queros with a graduate and our own students. We also worked with our student ambassador for Project 351. There are 351 high schools in Massachusetts, and there is an ambassador that represents each individual high school. So together with Where Queros, HDAC, Beautiful Mind Campaign, Project 351, and the New England Patriots, we were able to launch the Green Bandana Project. And the Green Bandana Project was a statewide project that the New England Patriots and other organizations helped fund by providing materials, stitching, embroidery, everything that was needed, floss, et cetera, et cetera. And we launched a mental awareness campaign last March. And Meg highlighted and featured her partnership with Holliston and other school communities in her report. So I just wanted to share that with all of you to let you know that this is what's happening, and these are the relationships that continue well beyond students' four years at Holliston High, that they come back. And they are coming back as entrepreneurs, as activists, and they're willing to come back to this community because it's so great, and we have so many good programs here to inspire the next generation of Holliston graduates and show them what they can do. So thank you, Susan, for inviting me to share that tonight, because I was just going to send an email, but I ended up here.
No, I really think it's important, because we don't always get to see what students do post-grad, and I wish we had a better way to capture that. So we're trying to think of ways to get more students back, so I'm glad you have these connections. And I thought, you know, it's important for us to hear the amazing things that students and staff do well beyond the four years that they're in the school. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
This is so amazing. Really impressive. So I was on the committee when we actually, when she launched the Beautiful Minds Campaign. It was 100 members of that, and then it grew to go down to the middle school, and, you know, she's a really impressive young woman, and I'm so glad that she's doing so well and that she's bringing her talents across Massachusetts and bringing them back to here too. So kudos to Megan. And thank you for presenting this.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
It's great. It's a lot of information. I've looked through some of it, but I want to read the whole thing. But I appreciate you coming in and talking about it. So at this point, we have new business as the field trip to Thailand, and so we'll just pull that forward to now to allow you to do everything at once. Is there something you?
And thank you. I appreciate that. So I am also one of the Global Citizens co-advisors with the coordinator Caitlin Mills and the additional co-advisors Doug Colay and Erica Colay. And when we started the Global Citizenship Program at Holliston, which Amelia is part of and did such a nice job, and we're staying to support each other tonight, we knew that travel would be an integral part of developing and fostering global citizenship. Travel can be life-changing for students, especially in expanding their worldview and giving them opportunities to learn about different cultures. And for the Global Citizens Program specifically, we've been focusing on travel opportunities that are very specific to the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. So we understand that students may travel for cultural experiences with their families, exchange programs, language exchanges, and all of those are really important part of personal development and global perspective. But in the Global Citizens Program, we really try to hone in on a specific Sustainable Development Goal. So as all of you know, in less than three months, 36 students and six chaperones are traveling to northern Italy on a sustainable farming tour. We're going to be in the Alps, on farms, rolling up our sleeves, and really learning about hydroponic farming, biodiversity, invasive species, sustainability. And then from there, we travel to southern France and return to Boston from France. That's a nine-day tour, and students could not wait to sign up. So now I'm asking for your approval for our 2027 tour. Our goal is to offer opportunities to students to travel with the Global Citizenship Program every other year. And we'd like to alternate between a Eurocentric trip and a trip that is outside of Europe. The trip that I'm asking for approval for is a 12-day tour in Thailand. And we selected this tour based on student feedback, the desire to explore South Asia, and really alternate between Europe and something outside of Europe. But also, it offers a service learning opportunity that is really unique and special. Again, it's a 12-day tour. It would happen over April vacation in 2027. And five days of that tour would involve students actually working, volunteering at an elephant sanctuary called Poopoo Paper Park. And I know the name is kind of gross, but what they actually do is they collect the stuff from the elephants, and they recycle it, and they make paper out of it, and they swear that it doesn't smell at all. So wrapping paper, cards, writing paper, all of this really wonderful stuff. The elephants that are there cannot really be reintegrated into the wild, so they are there as teaching animals. And we would not be there as tourists. We would be there as volunteers. Two days of the tour would consist of job training, where we would learn how to care for, aid, support, clean up, greet people. And then three days, we would be lodging outside of the park, but arriving at the park every day to fulfill our roles for the day and really immerse ourselves in that. The rest of the tour is more or less cultural, visiting shrines, temples, marketplaces, museums. So we're really excited about the prospect of doing this in 2027. It's a bold adventure, and I think it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for a lot of people to be able to do something like this. Our Global Citizens are ready for it. They're chomping at the bit. They can't wait to go if it's approved. So are there any questions? Is there any information I can provide for you?
Who bears the cost of this trip? Is it the families and students?
Yeah, so the families and students bear the cost of the trip. The cost of the trip is a $340 difference between the Italy trip and the Thailand trip, and the Thailand trip is four additional days. So the cost difference really isn't that much. But there are a few things that I want to share with you. Number one, EF International Tours, the company that we're working with, offers a Global Citizen Scholarship. They distribute 100 of those scholarships, $1,000 per recipient. So they're very generous with their scholarships. And this year, one of our travelers did apply and was awarded a scholarship, a $1,000 scholarship. Students also receive personal fundraising pages, and when they use that page for, to solicit donations, to fundraise money, 100% of the money that is fundraised goes to their balance. And the third thing is, now that we're building momentum at Holliston High School and we're traveling with EF International Tours, the Global Citizens Program is not the only program that is looking for approval. Students are traveling to Japan next year, too. EF offers Global Reward Travel Points. And those points, the more we travel accrue and can be used to award students in need financial support. We have some flexibility with how we distribute the points among our students, or we could distribute the points evenly. So even though the cost to Thailand is $340 more, because we have the Global Reward Points, it will bring that cost down. So again, students have the opportunity to apply and receive scholarships, fundraise, and this year, I didn't have any Global Rewards points to distribute because I had never traveled with the group before. But in 2027, we can distribute those points.
And the reason you're coming now is because you want, the students want to have time to achieve the goal of getting the funds for 2027.
Yeah, that's another piece. So Thailand in 2027 would allow students 25 months of financing, which comes out to, at cost, without the Global Reward Points or any fundraising, $209 a month. And so the longer they are enrolled, the more time they have to spread out that payment.
So just a quick question. This year's Italy.
Yes.
Next year's Japan.
Which I'm not affiliated with.
So this is a different, okay.
Yeah.
So that's why every other, I got you now.
So just the, yep, I'm just with the Global Citizens, and the Global Citizens are offering this opportunity every other year.
Okay.
Do we use fundraising as a Global Citizens Program, or is it up to the students individually to organize their own fundraising?
It's up to the students individually to organize their own fundraising, and... Which I'm not affiliated with.
Okay, so this is a different, okay.
Yeah.
So that's why every other, I got you now.
So just the, yep, I'm just with the Global Citizens and the Global Citizens are offering this opportunity every other year.
Do we use fundraising as a Global Citizens Program or is it up to the students individually to organize their own fundraising?
It's up to the students individually to organize their own fundraising and EF offers a sort of guidebook to fundraising, things that you can do like auction off, you know, baked goods to your family or have a lottery with your family and, because they all have their own individual pages. If we fundraised as a large group, it can be a little tricky to distribute that, but that's something that we definitely want to work on and look more into and think through that to make it more accessible to students.
Has the Global Citizenship Leadership considered potentially doing exchange programs instead of shorter trips, much the way the French Exchange Student, Exchange Program is operating, because that would cut those costs significantly and the students would actually be there for a longer period of time and actually be able to engage in a cultural exchange where someone would come over here and they would go over there.
Yeah.
Has that been discussed, because I feel like that seems like a more logical way to go than to, you know, have a 12-day, I mean, it just seems, the price is just to me fairly expensive when I look at it. I don't know what your thoughts are about it, but...
So we have not explored an exchange program and the French immersion students do have that opportunity to do the French immersion exchange programs. And there are different companies that offer different opportunities to students. So Forum International does a really nice job with language exchanges, that's something that my daughter did when she was in high school and she did a language exchange. In the Global Citizens Program, we really are focused on giving students an opportunity to learn about sustainability and wildlife, life on land, life below water, and really get into the Sustainable Development Goals as a group and bond as a group. That's a big piece of it too, because when we're traveling together and exploring, you know, all of these new opportunities together, it, I think it will really bring the group together to bond, but that's something that maybe in the future we could definitely look at and do, we just haven't explored that yet.
Okay, so the reason you're here is that we need to sort of approve these international field trips. Are people ready to do that?
I just had a question, so how long is it?
So Italy is nine days, Thailand is 12 days because it includes the five days of service learning. And that's really the key to this tour. It's not just travel and it's not just a cultural tour, it's not simply, let's go to Thailand, it is service learning. So students really are going to be trained at the sanctuary and learn about their processes. It's just going to be an invaluable experience for them as Global Citizens, not only exploring the world, but really rolling up their sleeves, volunteering, making a difference, and learning about the ins and outs of wildlife rescue.
Sounds like an amazing opportunity, but I, the cost is concerning, I'm just thinking about who could access those, even like fundraising, like it's, as you're looking past this trip to others further down the line, are you exploring other opportunities to meet the same goals, travel, but at a more, at a price point that more kids could take advantage of?
Yeah, we definitely keep price point in mind and as far as the service learning trips go, this was the most affordable. Europe is going to be just under $5,000. And so there are service learning opportunities and tours that are more expensive than this and then there are certainly opportunities that are less expensive, where we could travel to national parks within the United States. But knowing that every few years we have a brand-new batch of Global Citizens, this may be the first and the only time they get to experience something outside of the United States and really on this level with their group. So we see some students repeating tours, you know, and the affordability of that, I imagine, can be really challenging and they're going to want to fundraise, but for a lot of students, this is that one opportunity. When my daughter did the language exchange and that was an exchange, it did cost our family $5,000 and we budgeted for her knowing this will be the only time that she'll do a language exchange. And we definitely encouraged her to fundraise. I was aware of scholarships, although she did not apply. And unless you apply, you're not going to be granted the scholarship. So, yeah, you know, the cost is not easy on all families and I empathize with that because I've been there and with my own children. So that's why I wanted to start early, to give families the opportunity to really spread out that budget and do their fundraising. And again, remember I'm going to be applying travel points to their accounts in order to alleviate the burden of the cost.
Students are still able to be part of the Global Citizens endorsement without having to budget for and pay for a trip like this, right?
Absolutely.
They could with their family, take a trip to Canada.
Of course.
Or with their family, take a trip to a local, like a national park, but this...
Right. This is not a requirement of the Global Citizenship Program, it's just an opportunity. And it's an opportunity that students really want. Students asked, you know, what's the cap on this because they think that we're going to need two groups, they're ready to go, they're ready to sign up, they can't wait for it. Even Amelia was saying, gosh, I wish that I didn't miss the boat on this because Amelia will be 12th grader next year, so you'll be a freshman in college by the time we travel, right? And we were having that conversation today. But we recognize all of the opportunities that Global Citizens embrace, both on a local and global level, so whether they're involved in the French Exchange Program or traveling with another group or with their families, that's something they can, perspectives they can bring to the table. And no, this is not a requirement, it's just an opportunity.
All right, so if people are ready, we'll entertain a motion to approve this trip, though I would say just let's continue to look into different ways of providing additional support for students so that those, you know, can't afford this naturally might have more opportunities to do so.
Right.
But just as we go forward, keeping it sustainable.
Yeah, and that's a good perspective. There are other countries that we could go to that really, that touch us, that we could go to Canada, we could go to Mexico or something like that and still be pursuing the same objectives. It may be less expensive, more accessible, so...
Yeah, and that's another reason why every other year, we want to be really mindful and look at where we're going. So if incoming ninth graders next year feel as though Thailand is a little far, it's 12 days, expensive or anything like that, two years from then, we'll be doing something closer. And maybe looking at Mexico or England or Ireland or Canada or national parks within the United States. And really trying to, I think the goal is to try to give students a variety and really that service learning piece is a big one with this tour. Not all tours offer the service learning opportunities, so that was a big attraction for this one in particular.
Okay, I also hear Greenland's amazing.
There is a component of missing school for this though, right?
Sorry?
If it's 12 days, they do miss some school as well?
Yeah, students would miss a little bit of school on either end, yeah.
Okay. So, does anyone like to make a motion to approve this? Second? Okay. Sarah? All of us in favor? Opposed? Okay, that carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Amelia.
Thank you both.
Moral support.
Thank you.
All right, we have a policy.
Yes.
It's a second reading.
It's a second reading.
We don't actually have to read it then, right?
I don't have to if anybody has something else they want me to change other than the typos that we're in.
No, I'm good.
That's pretty much it. So we can waive it and...
All right, so motion to, well, entertain a motion to waive the second reading and approve it or we have to go with it?
Yeah, we have to approve it.
And approve IJ NDC, acceptable use of digital resources. Second? All in favor? All right, catching up. Central Office Updates.
Yeah, just a couple for me, a couple of updates on, I did have a, well, I guess I'll start first with, as many of you know, we are looking to finalize a decision and place a permanent principal at Rams and the interviews will take place with Dr. Menard and Mr. Liston, I'll be meeting those next week. They're having a meeting on Tuesday, the 28th, and then we'll do the interviews on the 30th. And I do think we still are seeking, if you're able, a volunteer from the school committee, if you could take part in those, if you'd like to, if you can't, we understand that, but we do always offer a slot for school committee to participate in those interviews. I don't know if anyone is available, but if so, if you could let us know tonight, Joanie would add you and get the invitations out.
Anyone interested?
When are the dates again?
The 28th from 3:30 to 4:30 and then the 30th from 3:00 to 8:30. It's a very long, rigorous schedule, but they're going to do all the interviews in one night so that they're not bringing people back to follow.
The 28th is a Zoom meeting. I'm gonna sell it.
28 is a Zoom meeting. I'm sorry?
Wasn't the interim search like all day for two days?
I'm sorry. The interim search was, I thought, we did, when we did shorter blocks, we did two smaller blocks, yes, for the interim, and it was a more expedited process.
I was like, two days?
I think two, but it was also, I think it was in the summer, so we didn't, so we didn't have the teacher's schedules, the flexibility of the teachers that sat on. Now we have to go around the teacher's schedules as well and students, because we will have a student on there.
So anyone able to, interested in doing it?
So sorry, the dates again are the 28th?
28th, 3:30 to 5...
3:30 to 4:30 by Zoom and then 30, the 30th, 3:00 to 8:30 in person.
That's central, in the conference room.
I know, it's a lot, we're not trying to pressure, we just wanted to...
It's just the earlyness of it.
Exactly.
I know, yeah, I can't make the...
No one able to do it?
Sarah wants to...
I'd definitely do the 28th.
Well, the 20th is just going over the process, though it's not the interview, so...
When you put Sarah down and just see if you can...
Tactically, and then we'll send you the information, you can make it.
I will send you the information and then you can let me know.
And when do you anticipate making a decision in announcement?
So they will then, that night, recommend finalists and send that to me on Friday probably. And then I will meet any of the finalists the following week and I'm trying to expedite this and get this resolved because we also will then have to post, potentially, post if Ms. Manning were the candidate, we would then post the assistant principal role as well, which is an interim role. So we want to plan for that and be mindful of that.
Okay.
I will add, so yesterday I did have my Rams student roundtable. They're amazing, all of the kids, I mean, I've had my regular roundtable meetings at all levels. And the middle schoolers, yesterday I did say to them, I really would like to hear, you don't have to talk about Ms. Manning per se, I would just like to hear your thoughts about what you would like to see in a permanent principal at Rams. And they did give me amazing feedback about Ms. Manning in particular, even though I wasn't trying to put them on the spot with that, but they also gave me a lot of information about the characters that they look for, kindness and empathy, people that listen to them, just a lot of great things and a lot of characteristics that I described of our current interim principals, so it was nice to hear. And we do have a student, I believe, that will sit in on the process next week as well. And then my only other thing was, I lost, so...
Good.
I know I lost my...
Good.
It's okay, I forgot what I was going to say, that's fine.
Doctor Menard?
Could you bring up the presentation, please? I have a very quick presentation to show you what we were able to accomplish on January 17th. So we had a full day and very productive and since Director McLeod is here, I'm going to punt it to him on a few times, so you can move it. So, take this one.
All right, sure. So we had a cybersecurity expert from Arctic and Company, Boston and Springfield locations. He spoke to the entire district here at the high school and then at the middle school. And he touched on pretty much all things cybersecurity. He talked about the Power School breach, which is just, I mean, this was planned months in advance, so it was just, the timing was kind of perfect for him to come in. So he touched on basically professionally, like what to watch out for, like all the phishing, no surprises. AI and how things are just becoming much more sophisticated, you no longer see those errors in those emails like you used to see grammatical errors, not anymore. And then the next frontier might be voice, where the AI can, and Dr. Cusk and I talked about this a little bit, you know, capture her voice perhaps and use that to socially engineer phishing attempts, so...
Yours right now.
And mine right now, although they don't care about directors of technology, they like superintendents and principals mainly. So the three of us are pretty safe. But it was good, the audience had plenty of time to ask questions, people were asking about aging parents and all kinds of things. So it was a personal and professional presentation because it's cybersecurity, so, and it's also in our strategic plan, so that was one of the presentations we'll keep going.
And for all the teachers, they also attended a landmarked company that provides professional development. Director B was able to make the arrangement. We had them come and talk to all teachers, really getting them to understand the science of reading and how it applies in all content areas. You do not have to be teaching ELA in order for you to be responsible for that. So they went through that and then all staff had an opportunity to, in small groups, really discuss some reflective questions and kind of get some ideas off each other, how that really applies to their subject area. Next, some other building-based teacher PD we had. At Placentino, they were working on Eureka Math Squared. We had an elementary ELA curriculum review meeting. Kami Training for Miller Two Levels, Mr. McLeod, if you want to expand on that?
Yes, so Kami used to be a resource mainly for special education students, but it's now expanded because it's great at providing accessibility, so lots of students have, you know, different needs in the classroom, so Kami offers an opportunity for teachers to differentiate and integrates with Google Docs so teachers can easily open Kami within a Google Doc and get all the features of that resource. So we're piloting it this year for district-wide implementation and determining if it's a good fit.
At Rams, they continued their social-emotional work. They really, they made a differentiated menu choice option to meet staff where they were in their progression in social-emotional learning. At Rams, the eighth-grade math team met with the math department chair here at the high school, have some vertical alignment conversations. And then also the high school, they did work on vision, mission, and values regarding MTSS. The next one. Pair of professionals were here all day, remember this is their second full day. They had ruler training, which is social-emotional learning, continuing training there. They had data dive, how it impacts their role in the classroom. As Mr. McLeod talked about, they also attended the cybersecurity training. And then they had training on accommodations and modifications for multi-language learners. The nurses attended two different trainings by very well-trained staff from New England. One was trauma symposium and the other one was pediatric cardiac emergencies and COVID impact on youth. We did have additional training, virtual choice boards for counselors, SACs and school psychs, for special ed, SLPs, OTs and PTs, IEP accommodations and modifications. Our unified arts at the elementary level, they looked at special services, protocols for their classrooms, and then our counselors, SACs and school psychs and SS... And then our counselors, SACs and school psychs, and SSPs, had 504 training with Katie Minnow, are one of our lawyers, district lawyers. So the full day, any questions? You're welcome.
Really brief, just, we have some walkthroughs with some of our potential candidates for maintenance technician who's replacing Matt Robshot, who has moved into our director of maintenance position tomorrow down at Placentino Miller, and are excited to kind of get that, that position in our maintenance staff at full, fulfill there. One, just acknowledging earlier this evening, our principals who are here for their priority needs, now being at the other side of the table, or in a different position, leading into the budget cycle, and understanding, having been here for the last 12 years and how this builds out, I'm just very appreciative of their presentations and identifying the needs of our district, so thank you.
Great, thank you. And yes, that was a great job by the principals earlier this evening. Moving on, we don't have any personnel, so we'll move to reports from the subcommittees, communications?
We have a person who has recorded and took a lot of events in previous meetings, so we're kind of there, which is great.
Awesome.
We met on Tuesday, and I did not schedule us for another meeting, but we will be doing that. Sorry, I love discussing. I mean, we aren't discussing stuff, obviously, there's a few policies we have to bring up that need to be rescinded, because other policies have taken place and/or they're redundant, so we'll be bringing some rescinded policies. The word I know exciting, probably at the next meeting.
But we had a meeting yesterday, our next meeting is Monday, February 10th, at 4:30, Central Office. Yesterday, we went over some, minutes were approved, we did an update on the FY25 operating budget, and again, discussed where we were with FY26. We talked about, you know, some of the budget impact of the school start times change, and we did a preliminary review of the FY26 capital budget.
Did you happen to get transportation costs yet?
We are working on this, so yes, that's what we talked about in terms of the bus contract, and we will have more information in mid-February.
Okay.
And, okay, so should we dial?
We had to reschedule our meeting, because some people were sick, and the rest of us did not want to get sick. So what did we reschedule it to?
I don't think it's on the calendar, but I just looked up, January 27th.
That's it, yeah, 4:30. It's aspirational for me to get there, 4:15.
Or 4:30?
Yeah, sorry.
I just sent it for 4:30 completion.
You did, yeah.
27?
Yes.
Works better.
Yeah, yeah. I really try hard to get out of the office ready for it, it just doesn't seem to happen, and I keep making people wait, so I'm just gonna say 4:30, and it'll be fine.
All right, moving on to old business, and so high school schedule update, I know there have been some questions that I've heard about online and people have been asking, so just wanted to go over a few things. So, you know, just as a reminder to the community, on May 20th, 2024, the Hollison School Committee came to a memorandum of agreement, or an MOA, with the Hollison Federation of Teachers on a successor collective bargaining contract. This agreement included the creation of a high school schedule committee, a subcommittee that was tasked with researching and evaluating our current high school schedule and making a recommendation on a potential change to the schedule by January 1st. The agreement went into effect on September 10th, 2024, upon the passage of the operational override to fund the salary portion of the MOA. Between September 10th and December 20th, the scheduling subcommittee met at least 10 times for over 30 hours and narrowed down high school scheduling options and agreed to survey students, teachers, families, and families regarding several high school scheduling options. On December 20th, 2024, the scheduling subcommittee voted to recommend a schedule to Hollison School Committee and the Hollison Federation of Teachers for ratification per the MOA, the agreement. Schedule option one was recommended in a vote, supported by five of the eight subcommittee members, four administrators, and one teacher, with the remaining three teachers either voting against all proposed schedules or abstaining. At our meeting on January 9th, our meeting, the Hollison School Committee meeting on January 9th, 2025, we notified the community that the Hollison Federation of Teachers had communicated to the Hollison School Committee that they had voted not to ratify the recommended schedule. Subsequently, the Hollison School Committee voted to ratify the schedule in its own vote as recommended by the scheduling subcommittee. Due to actions and omissions by the Hollison Federation, the HFT, HFT members on the scheduling subcommittee during the scheduled subcommittee's meetings and leading up to the failed HFT ratification vote on January 8th, the Hollison School Committee filed an unfair labor practice charge against the Hollison Federation of Teachers yesterday. We assert that on multiple occasions, the HFT members of the scheduling, of the scheduling subcommittee members failed to bargain in good faith as required by Massachusetts labor laws. While I believe that it is unfortunate that we had to take this action, I want to unequivocally state that the Hollison School Committee remains committed to working with the HFT to implement a new schedule via good-faith bargaining. While we requested expedited review as part of our unfair labor practice charge against the HFT, there is no guarantee that we will receive this expedited review, and even if we do, that it will be, you know, we'll receive a ruling in time to implement a schedule for next year. Consequently, because we must continue to move the district forward by addressing significant concerns with the existing schedule, things that we've been talking about for a long time, we need to also look to moving forward simultaneously with an alternative path, that is my, in my view. So tonight, I want to talk about and make a motion to request that Dr. Cusk could look into the feasibility of minor adjustments in the implementation of our existing high school schedule for the 24, sorry, for the 25, 26 school year to allow for classes to run year-long. Specifically, I'd like to understand the feasibility of using the existing schedule to implement an AB class offering where classes meet every other day and students take eight classes at a time, but for the entire year. So the motion I want to make also includes a request to present the feasibility to the school committee in the near future for our consideration on potentially voting to implement it next year. So we're not voting on any implementation this year, we want to look into it, and we're asking Dr. Cusk to look into it for potential future vote.
So before we do that, I'm just curious, when Mr. List needs to make sure that the course schedules are set for next year? Because students, you know, register for classes, I believe, in March, right? So I feel like there is some.
That's going to be part of the feasibility.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Just want to be mindful that that's, it's still a deadline, it's still near, it's not like we can wait till May.
No, no, we're certainly not waiting till May, so.
We meet again twice, September.
Right. So while this obviously is an ideal, you know, we need to look at these alternatives in case our filing cannot be resolved expeditiously as we work towards improving our equitable educational offerings for all students. So, you know, this is, this is not what I was hoping for, but at the same time, there are such glaring issues with our current schedule that I think that we need to look at alternatives. So we can open up to the floor, we can, so we can second the motion, or.
Did you make a motion already? Sorry, I just wanted to show that.
Yeah.
Good question. As we assess the feasibility of altering the existing schedule, it will take into account the additional 15 minutes, and how would that be applied?
We'll have to work on that.
Okay.
Would we hear on feasibility by the next school committee meeting?
We haven't had a chance, obviously, so my hope would be that we could try to get that to you by February 13th, now that, if that's the vote that you make tonight, but I would meet with Mr. List and probably have Dr. Jordan, since he's been involved in the high school schedule discussion. So that would be my desire to get it to you as soon as possible, because we are in a tight timeline to make changes and.
I would second the motion.
Any more questions or debate? All right, all those in favor? Opposed, okay, that carries unanimously, so. Thank you. Additionally, we have in your, in our folders, a communication to send out to the, to the community about this. Do we want to just spend a minute just reading over it? Since we have Dan here now, do we want to send up now, or do we want to wait for tomorrow? Okay, that's fine. I added the date up top. For some reason, when I make changes, it's not showing. It'll be sent out to the, to the community.
In what, like?
Email?
Oh, so it's all, mostly the parents, families.
And the, and the, and then the community members who have signed up for the, yeah.
All the teachers, like, you just say it, you're back to 2024, instead of 2025. But you don't say.
Okay, I'm taking, taking off. Just like, who took the R off? Why are we taking the R off?
Hmm?
You took the R off.
What did I do? Took off an R?
Can we put the U into it?
Yeah, me too, for sure.
Yes. December 30th?
Yeah, I know, but even if you say 2024 after, whatever you can put the D, you can put the D.
That looks incorrect.
It is.
Soon as this goes on, it's tomorrow, because it must have happened yesterday.
Oh. Yeah, 20 seconds.
No, you did, all day long.
Period. Is there a period there? I can't tell if it's correct. I'm just gonna go and accept them. Just make sure it looks good. Did I get everything? All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the communication to be sent out to the, to the community tomorrow. All in favor? Thank you.
Dan, can you make sure that when you send the communication out, that it has all of our names and email addresses at the bottom of it? You know that that's supposed to be happening, but I haven't seen the communications coming in that way. Okay, thank you.
I don't, we don't usually put the email address in the files or the names.
But our names and our email address.
But then I like, okay, we can, that's fine. So you can set, you can, you want me to send this to you, or can you grab it from the folder? Okay, so tomorrow morning? Sure, thank you very much. All right. So moving on, the continuation of the math, the middle school math discussion. I put this on here in case you, there was some more information we wanted to talk about tonight.
I think we just wanted to share some possibilities based on what we were hearing and the direction that we would like to go for next year, so we can certainly, again, this is not a final or finite discussion, but we wanted to just pose some ideas to try to reach the goal of trying to get Algebra I into 25, 26 for our advanced students. So we're gonna show you a couple of things here tonight. So this is our current model, and, you know, there could be a couple of minor things that need to be tweaked there, but we currently have heterogeneous grade six math and heterogeneous grade seventh math. In eighth grade is when we do the leveling in both science and math. We have the regular grade eight math standards, and then we also have Algebra I, Part I. So you can see, I'm not gonna go over all of that, but you can see the opportunities that students have going from either Math 8 or Algebra I, and where they can go into the high school.
Do we have any kids that went from Math 8 to Algebra I, Part 2 this year?
I can't answer that without having delved into it, I don't have the data with me tonight, so we could. I can't answer that without having delved into it. I don't have the data with me tonight, so we could get that.
I just didn't know we had any type of, whether we had any kids who moved from Math Eight to Algebra I, Part Two, therein skipping over Algebra I, Part One. I wasn't aware of any math-like way to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Some of this was given to us and we've been trying to vet it, but we're just trying to get some information on sort of where we could go, knowing that there's still time to make tweaks and do some summer work to get there. So what we were hearing is trying to, so the the current model, from talking to teachers, there are four standards that we're not covering in Algebra I in grade eight that end up going into the Part Two in the high school, just because they can't fit it all in right now. So we move on. So what we would propose, in the hope of trying to deal with some of the equity, but knowing that it's be very tough to try to adjust next year, we talked about trying to do Algebra I for.
Can I just send it around for a second? Can you refresh it? Because Assistant Principal Taylor's in there right now, making some adjustments, so I just wanna.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
So one of the things we're working on, we talked with a lot of the training that we've been doing with teachers, plus the changes that we've done with the math resources that we purchased. So the standards are the curriculum and each grade level is expected to teach the math standards. The tools that we bought are trying to prioritize the standards and the training as well. So really what we need to do for a multi-year process is to make sure that we're bringing more algebraic thinking in in all levels. And there is algebraic thinking in the in the lower levels in elementary, but we're trying to bring that further down and then make sure that we're addressing it so that by the time they get to grade eight, they can handle more advanced learning in Algebra. So last year, we talked with the teachers and did some summer work about trying to take some of the math grade eight standards and bring them down to grade seven. They have tried to do some of that. It's been challenging. They don't think they're gonna be able to get to where they would like to get because it's a lot to fit in. And similarly, we talked about trying to bring more Algebra standards in grade eight and at some point trying to bring standards down to grade seven. I think there was only one standard that grade six had talked about trying to bring down and they probably haven't taught it yet. So I would assume that would be later in the year. But ultimately, if we're looking for a multi-year trajectory, even though the group that, the math study group was recommending de-leveling to address the concerns around our equity audit, we know that that may not be the best route to take for next year because if we tried to do Algebra I the way it exists right now with those four additional standards, but they haven't had the math grade eight standards, we'd be having gaps in there even more so. So we would like to try to work with the teachers to see if we can take the current math, the current Algebra that's in grade eight and work on that being the offering for most students and then the advanced students would get the full Algebra I.
Why would a student next, this is for next year, right? So why would a student who's taking a full year of Algebra I next year need to go into Algebra I, Part Two in high school?
If they were struggling, they might end up having to repeat some of it. That's.
But they would go, but if they're struggling, they're gonna go into Algebra I, Part Two honors?
Well, if you look at what I put above, though, this is the current model that they do at the high school. So up above, you can see ninth grade current, that the hope would be, as we proposed in our presentation last time, that we would want our high school teachers to do a math study group to see if this is the change we make for next year. Then the following year, they would want to try to adjust. So that might not be. I didn't want to change what we're doing already.
So what I think would be, I think helpful at least for me, would be to see how it is now and sort of what I what I center out of the the standards and the modules that are being taught now, what are being, and then in all these classes, and then what is being sort of proposed for next year for these classes. I just, I wanna see the movement of, because I can't, you know, because right now we're just saying Algebra I and it's sort of this, you know, seeing what is actually being taught sort of underneath, understand the movement and how it's being.
Yeah, I do have that. I think the issue right now is that we would want to work with the teachers to make sure that they can actually give that. I can, I could tell you what we would like to do to try to get all Algebra I, which is the four more additional standards that is done currently in Algebra I, Part Two. But we really would, that's the work we would want to do with the teachers this spring, which we talked about in our presentation before.
So right, so maybe just putting together sort of the, what your thought would be for next year, what you'd like to do for next year, then we'll go back and have conversations with the teachers to see if that's actually possible. I just, I, I understand what you're saying, but and it's sort of putting the cart a little bit before the horse, but at the same time, understanding what your model is and where you're striving to get to is important.
So I think to Anne's point earlier, prior to 2019, they had the grade seven accelerated math and then three levels in grade eight. And we also are mindful of the work that we've done with the equity audit and all that work that would actually be backwards to where we're trying to progress. So trying to move the Algebra standards down to the lower grade levels so that when we progress up, they're ready to handle more algebraic thinking in grade eight was the way we were trying to get the Algebra I that you had discussed when you voted last spring.
How would you decide if we got the standards of grade six and seven, these are de-level grades? You're putting more pressure on teachers to teach more for students that maybe have different levels of learning.
Which is what we do in elementary school. I mean, that's, that's how I taught. I had, I taught grade three and four for 10 years and I had three levels of math within my classroom. I mean, that's, that's how I taught. I would start the lesson with one and then we'd try to differentiate to reach the other levels. So you're never gonna get every child there. But if the goal is to try to do it at full Algebra I in grade eight, but also try to open up doors for other students, we don't feel like we could do that in the, without having at least the two levels right now.
I guess what I'm saying is like, I know the goal is not necessarily to go back to leveling, but we're putting more pressure on six and seven in a homogeneous classroom that may already be struggling to teach the standards that are put forth.
Increases the amount of content they have to teach. And perhaps not getting to the depth because you've got the.
Yeah. I think isn't it a heterogeneous classroom?
Heterogeneous classroom, yeah.
I think the other piece is that it's, it's tracked to like science as well. Like if you are in a certain, you know, math and you can't get a certain science either. So that's sort of part of the problem, I think.
So maybe go on to the next slide, Ian. So this would be kind of where we're thinking about is that the work next year in ninth grade would be that they would be looking at if we're offering Math Eight Algebra in grade eight and then Algebra I for advanced learners in grade eight and trying to open up and expand offerings for students, then what should we be doing in ninth grade? It is, you know, a little bit, I wonder like why we're taking our students in grade nine. If we're, if we're looking to do full Algebra I in grade eight, a full year class, but then in high school, some of our students are getting two full years of Algebra I in ninth grade, which doesn't all, it seems counterproductive to me that we're looking to do a full year of Algebra I in grade eight, but then in grade nine, some of our kids are getting Algebra I, Part One and Algebra I, Part Two, which is actually, because we have a semester schedule, that's two years of math. So.
Well, I think also that's probably why we should get the high school math teachers involved in this.
And that's exactly why we would want them to have next year to start planning for the following year. So considerations for this was really back to the work that we had done in the past, opening up more opportunities so students have opportunities to explore the higher levels. We're also, right now, we see students that have not been in the higher level math and have been basically tracked out of that, but they are cognitively ready at times and we haven't had a way to move them along. Although the data that we showed, I think, at the last meeting does demonstrate that we have some students that are in lower levels that are actually achieving higher than some of the students in the higher levels. So we definitely would have to look at the placement criteria so that we have opportunities for that movement because this is where the, the more you add levels, the more you track students, the more you actually close doors, and that's the worry. Whereas in high school, we do have the ability to expand and offer more opportunities for students. Because we're in teams, we really lock kids out even more so. When you add teams and levels, the kids are pretty much tracked all day and it is counterproductive to what you're trying to accomplish in other areas, social, emotional learning and things. So this is, this is how we are hoping to try to make that transition.
Can we remove the teams, which in a way would help transition them better to high school, which doesn't have teams, right?
So that, that, you know, is something we've talked about. I feel like that is also something that teachers brought back. It predates me. But that was a big discussion of which is more important at middle school and they feel that the value they get for the social, emotional piece and the well-being, teams is a better model. But if that was the direction you wanted to go, then yes, you would have to eliminate teams. Otherwise, we continue to put, a lot of our IEP students are in the lower level and there's sometimes our ELL students for various reasons. We're not getting them the opportunities and we're locking them out. And then there is really no pathway to take, to get into these higher levels and even into high school sometimes.
So I do think we should probably take a look at the, that the teams, talk, you know, survey the, not survey, talk to the teachers, see, see what their thoughts are, but I think that we certainly don't want to sort of lock kids in, certainly form, you know, special education teams or anything like that to try, I mean, that is absolutely not, not acceptable. But if the alternative is, then therefore that we can't do, you know, allow the, the kids who are running at a faster pace to run at that faster pace and we sort of slow them down, I'm not sure that that's acceptable either.
You just mean the middle school teachers, correct?
Just talk to the eighth grade teachers about, about, you know.
We are on borrowed time though to make, if we were making a drastic change like that, that would be very challenging to do for next year. Also with our enrollment shifts, as you've seen, we have a smaller bubble going through. So we may not have the availability to accommodate that.
How are we supporting the teachers this year in sixth and seventh grade to increase the number of standards that they're heading to prepare for this for next year?
So they started some of that work last year. That's what the summer work was and we would do that work again with them. The seventh grade teachers have tried to absorb more of the, a couple of the eighth grade standards. And from what I'm hearing, the grade eight teachers that are doing, they've already tried to bring in more of the Algebra I standards as well because they knew that that was something that you had talked about last spring. So this is the work that Joni had done and Carla had done with them in the summer. Again, doesn't mean they're gonna get there, you know, this is a multi-year process. When you make changes like this, it's really a three to five time, three to five year timeline. Do you want to continue on? This is what I did to offer some other slides. So this is what we did talk about ultimately was the recommendation from the math study group was the de-leveling. Given the challenges and the time, the trajectory that we're on, we're suggesting that we wouldn't do that for next, next year, the de-leveling, potentially the following year. But having next year to do the ninth grade study group, look at the changes by adjusting and having a full Algebra I at, in grade eight with a regular Math Eight Algebra I as well. So you'd still have the two levels for next year, but explore that possibility for the following year after we've done some work with the high school, which would then allow students, more students to be able to go into either Algebra I, Part Two or honors or right into geometry is what we're hoping to try to get more kids into that when they enter high school so that they can get to calculus. So part of the reason where, where we are is the schedule does create that issue and that's why we've had the Algebra I, Part One and Part Two. But really, it's interesting that we're trying to accomplish so much in grade eight, but then we're doing two full years for many kids of Algebra I. It's, it's counterintuitive. So I'd like to see what we can, how we can help our grade nine and 10 teachers to say, what can we do to try to push that up as well? If you went to full year, you'd probably be doing Algebra I all year and not having it in parts, which is actually two years, right? We'd be, because just the kids having it every other day would allow some of that. Which is why for next year, we're suggesting that, yes.
So, but this is going backwards because you're now doing some Math Eight in grade eight for everybody and then some Algebra I. So I, I, and I would prefer, I don't know if I can support this. I think that I'd prefer to see, let's keep Algebra I as an honors course in eighth grade. Let's take Math Eight and see over a span of three to five years how much we can sort of advance all the kids to get to them. And then maybe in three to five years, maybe then we've gotten the standards accelerated enough that you're doing, you're doing the same.
Can you go back?
Yeah.
And I think that that is definitely an option.
Go back again?
We're just saying, I'm trying to accommodate the fact that we talked about de-leveling as one of the, you know, we're looking at the data, that was the ultimate thinking, right? You could slow down that process to your point and every year assess how the kids are doing.
I don't think de-leveling was ever the, the, I don't think we ever, there's a school that decided.
No, I didn't say, I'm saying. I'm just saying that because the math study group presented that, I was just showing you that next year we could reassess and decide whether you wanted to go that direction or not. It could be a multi-year saying, nope, we'll just.
Is this what you are referring to? So we make sure we're understanding what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm saying keep, keep that and try to keep accelerating the Math Eight standards.
But I think what you're saying is next year, Algebra I teaches all of Algebra. I don't care whether you call it honors, I'll call it honors, but it teaches all of the standards, including the four standards that we're still not hitting this year. Basically what we were doing in 2019 where we, and like what Hopkins does now, where we teach all of the standards of Algebra. And then with Math Eight, we are building in more gradually over time, more and more of the Algebra standards as well.
And this is not to say that they're gonna be able to do all of this, like we really, we would start that process. So you're right, it would take a multiple years. So it might be very well done to say, let's do it over a three-year process and then determine where we are in a few years to see, have we moved? Otherwise, we're, we're trying to also address the fact that we need more of that in kindergarten all the way up as well. So after multiple years, our kids are gonna be coming up with more of those skills as we advance our students and all.
So I understood that the Algebra I course previously taught, I don't know if it was just the power system to top the standards, but enough that you'd be able to do Algebra II. Is that the understanding?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Algebra II is not Algebra I, Part Two.
I understand that.
Right, no, I'm, I'm terrified, no, I'm terrified for myself.
This is where it's confusing, the Part One, Part Two does throw people off, so that's why. But yes, that would be the, the thinking that, but usually you take Algebra I, then geometry, and then Algebra II.
Right, so in 2019, I know, I know you were here, but in 2019, there was no Algebra I, Part Two at the high school. Correct?
Um, I'm not.
Anne would probably know more over there, but I think there was.
I think there was.
No, no, but this is, this is factual based, not opinion based.
It's not opinion based.
Right. Was there a class?
Back in 2019, Anne, was there, was there at the high school Part Two? There was Part Two.
We also had, we also had.
Right. She didn't earn all the standards in.
If you struggled in Algebra in eighth grade, you could repeat part of it.
Right, that existed as a class?
So that existed as a class.
Okay.
So for those kids that, they, so honestly, part, Algebra, Math Eight, it's hard for.
Anne, you just wanna come up to the microphone? Do you want to just come up to the microphone? I, I know, but.
I mean, I. Math Eight is a lot of the algebra, okay, which is beginning of Part One of Algebra. So kids that get enough of that, some of the kids that are high flyers and they really wanna learn, they can go to Part Two and they can be successful. So yes, we have that. And then before, before they de-level in seventh grade, what most schools have now is that they have eighth grade algebra. They get to the stuff we used to get to, which gave the kids enough opportunity to get to go to Algebra II without having to take Algebra I.
Yes.
But if you don't, and I know people who wanna hear this, but if you don't level in seventh grade, there's no way you're gonna be able to accomplish that. That's, it's just, there's just no way.
There's a lot of standards to cover.
A lot of standards to cover and I think what you were saying, it puts a lot of pressure. And I don't know, that's where I'm gonna stop. I'll answer anyway.
So can you go to the last slide?
But can I just say one more thing? No, just one more thing.
Yes.
You can get to different levels to wanting to get to high school, not just block them to.
So the reason I put this up is because this is what we did present the last time about the de-leveling and what it would mean, it would satisfy the equity audit things. We understand that there are barriers and concerns with that. So, you know, I certainly am open and I think the discussions we've had, we're open to still having two levels in grade eight. Yeah, I would be very worried about trying to add more levels back because it is kind of going opposite of what we've heard from our equity and, and the opportunities for students and the doors that close, the longer, or the earlier you level. And this came out in the equity audit, you do take kids off a path very early and it becomes even more.
And I get that, but that's somewhat easier to remediate, is it?
Hold on a second.
That's somewhat easier to, not easier, it means it costs money, but for us to work on ways of helping them and accelerating them through. That's somewhat easier to, not easier, because it costs money, but for us to work on ways of, of helping them and accelerating them through, through tutors. I, I would, what I, I still think is always missed when we're talking about equity is the equity for those kids that are able to go faster. And I, I just, I'm, I'm worried that if we, you know, become a district that sort of is doing that, that we're doing ourselves a disservice over the long term.
Well, anyway, that's why we proposed the sort of intermediate phase of saying, if, if we're looking to get as much Algebra I in grade eight, keep the two levels and try to gradually advance our students so that more students will get to there. And then we can reassess in a few years' time.
And I also, the other, the other part of the equity piece of it though is also unidentified. The kids that are going to take some of these different classes. And I think some of the data you showed at the last, um.
Meeting.
Meeting really showed the importance of looking at a more data-based approach, which I think with some of the tests, testing and IXL and that, that information that we have now, we can do a better job of using that criteria to hopefully help kids and like not just put them in the right class, but also try and support kids who are almost there and maybe just need.
And allow for overrides.
And regardless of which direction we go, that is something we are working on as part of this whole process of trying to find better ways to assess children so that we're not closing doors and trying to open doors regardless of any direction we take.
So I'll, I'll just say this, I mean, and I know this is an encounter to what is a lot of, is being said, but I would actually be interested in actually exploring bringing back leveling in, in grade seven. I think that, I, I understand what, what the equity audit was saying. But I, I just, I think that, and it may be that we can't do it until we have the ability to bring resources to it. Because again, I, I do not want to start, you know, locking kids out of the ability to get to, to move to, to different levels if they are able to, you know, they, they, in, in eighth grade, they've, they've been sort of, you know, on the, they're having in the honors or whatever. But, but in eighth grade or ninth grade, whatever, it just clicks and they get it and, and they can go. I want to make sure that they, they're able to do that. Some, some people, you know, grasp subjects later on, so we need to create those pathways. At the same time, I don't, I, I just, I, I just think that we need to be more, um, open to ensuring that, that our kids that can do it have the opportunities to do it.
I think we, we may run into if we go that route, um, where we're out of compliance with special ed. I'll be honest with you, that's part of the concern that's driving a lot of these conversations as well, is we're overloading our classes. Because again, if you're going back to the fact that we have teams and then we're leveling in, in science and math, what ends up happening is the majority of students get tracked one way or the other and there's no way out of that. So, you know, there's a lot of different factors, the team.
It's also the language, crack like a bone.
It's, it's just, and that's the problem. When you make teams, the levels become even more impactful because the levels now push our kids in one direction or the other and it's really hard to move.
Yeah, yeah, hearing that, but then let's explore not having teams.
Really, that's the challenge, like I feel like creating common that's really tough. And I don't know if it's helping the bottom as much as we think it is. I think by creating paths, having leveling sooner allows us actually identify students that are exceeding where they're at, but also they need more help earlier and you can create those pathways to get them in the right spot. But if you go from not leveled to leveled, you know, instantly, you lose ability to do that sooner.
The research, there's a lot of research that would say differently. So I mean, I think you can find research on both sides depending on the study.
Yeah.
But, but there's a lot of research that would show you, some kids also just aren't ready at a certain time. But then if they haven't had the opportunity, they fall behind and can't catch up because they haven't, you know. So there's a lot of.
Historically, when we had the three levels, didn't we have classrooms where at the, at the highest level, you'd have like full classes, 32, 33? There was a time when kids were standing there because you couldn't get enough desks in there. And at some of the lower levels, it, you had classes, class sizes of 15, 16, 17, plus you might have support in there too.
We, uh, whenever we had or had like imbalance based off of like what we would have, you're, you're leaning more towards small class sizes in, um, yeah, in like your Math eight than you were in your Algebra or when you had, when we ran IPS. Those would be a little bit larger class sizes, um, just so that we had that, that layer of support that would be there. So yes.
Well, I mean, I think ultimately we're looking for your input as to where you want us to go for next year because our teachers are waiting to try to plan for that and we have to kind of map out, um, trying to accomplish some of this work for next year.
Something that was something that the math group looked at, Dr. Jordan did a presentation last year where you shared something that your team of teachers looked at in terms of, um, I believe it was like a visual of the eighth grade.
Sticky notes.
Yes, sticky notes, yeah. And it identified who was taking the upper level classes and who wasn't. And it was very clear. And I believe that you said that the way that the scheduling was currently in place, it created barriers for students with disabilities and EL students to get services and advance, I mean, pursue advanced. So I was hoping that that was something that this math group would tackle. Is there a way to, for multilingual learners and our students with disabilities, that's 25% of the middle school population. I'm, I'm sure there are some of those students that are ready for, um, advanced math. How do we get them into it and still get their services?
So that is what we presented the data, if you recall, when we did our math study group, those were the kids we were talking about. And so if we go to the model that we described with trying to get a full Algebra I for the advanced, we would have to look at other, we haven't, we haven't had time to kind of go through what can we do. But part of that is an end of the, end of the year assessment, which we did present at our math study group presentation. And then also we talked about trying to look at the criteria again, but that's some work we would still have to do with the middle school teachers.
With the data that Carla Fausch shared, it looks like if you created those two levels, you would still have, the way that it's, was presented, you'd still have one class that is very heavily Hispanic, students with disabilities and multilingual learners. And very overly representative of multilingual, uh, students with disabilities based on who are the students that are two, three, and four grade levels below in math.
And, and then that, that's part of the limitation of the team, right? That's, that's, that's what we run into and that's.
That's, that's what I'm curious about. Is there a way to offer different levels of math and provide students with their services with that? Is it the team structure that's creating the barriers? I'm just not understanding how, how the components work.
Well, the teams, the team structure limits the ability to move kids around, right? Because you only have certain options, especially on a two-teacher team. So if you have, what do they have, just one advanced and?
What, I mean, it, it's not just your teams. It's also like, say you have one special educator, the number of special educators you have and you pair like students together and how that grouping occurs. Also defaults regardless if you have teams or not into heavy 504 IEP into those spaces based on like how we're, how we're covering that. I would just my, because I'd heard a lot about de-teaming, things like that. I wouldn't want the, the potential of a solution to result in another problem that's there. So I just, that would be, I'm staying pretty out of it as far as some of this. But like, that, that would be my biggest caution is the middle school has gotten where they are based on many of the structures that have unconsciously put there in the first place. So as we look at trying to create a solution, it shouldn't create another, another problem.
And in looking at our MCAST scores, which is just one, um, one assessment, there was a decline over COVID in grade eight math and we saw that, it was somewhat significant. But if you look at our current grade eight scores, they've, even though we took those levels away and have less levels right now in grade eight, the scores are kind of rising back up to where they were pre-COVID, which would make me feel that the model is not as far off as we think if the kids are, the kids that are being assessed are doing fairly consistent with what was pre-COVID and the, the model that we talked about with the three levels in grade eight and two levels in grade seven.
Hillary, I would say you're correct based on my little colored post-it note. I don't know, I was going in, I had a moment there when I was trying to create that, but, uh, I just started on it and it kind of went. But yes, with the way our structures, whether we add levels or whether we're in current, our current structure, are creating significant inequities for our students as far as how it defaults there. While we have, it's, there's, there are other third and fourth levels that, that exist within there and that we have a co-tat that exists, where there are certain services that have to be pushed into certain classes that create these other types of levels that exist that are not like Algebra and Math eight. There are other classes that exist that create those as well. So we're also, we're limited on our L educators. And so how do we create that? We end up having to cluster the certain, certain classes based on the numbers we have. But those spaces tend to be spaces that, that are heavy on IPs, 504s. And then we create these zones because those are also students that don't find their way to our higher level classes, that you end up in these, these places where your algebra are predominantly white, white students.
And then it's, and because we're not in a very large district, that also creates limitations because there's just not as many teams and shifts that you can do to keep, you know, one advanced in each class, in each team.
So we have one L teacher for Rams also.
Okay, so what do we want to see for next time to start? Because we do need to give some guidance on, on direction. I've, I've asked for something, it's just the standards for, for the different classes, at least in the sort of the ideal model. But other than that, um, what are, what are people thinking as far as what they want to do?
In the proposed model, I am concerned with the addition of standards in sixth and seventh. So I don't know how we engage.
I guess it'd be good to know where we're at right now, how well we're achieving the standards we're in, or we have in those grades. And by adding more, do we feel like we can take those on? Or are we going to be here a year from now and say this was a mistake?
I mean, Algebra is not confined to grade eight in high school, right? We, we, we teach algebraic standards in all levels. And part of the work that we're doing is to help our teachers learn to help better teach some of those standards as well. I mean, that's really an effort that we made.
Even in pre-K all the way up.
So that work is already starting with the hope that now our K students will have expanded and as they continue on. So that's why that sort of that three to five years is where you should reap the benefits when you start addressing that regardless of what we do. Even if we did nothing different this going into next year, just the work that we've already started and continuing should result in better algebraic exposure for all students regardless of age.
Focus, we've been talking all about, all middle school, really focused on eighth grade. And I am concerned with sixth and seventh grade, so we don't set up for success, eighth grade, and those students are, any student who's, could be disadvantaged.
And I think the reason for trying to, the desire to keep the two levels in grade eight by some is, is to try to give them more opportunities going into high school. But to Anne's point, some kids are able to do that regardless of the levels that we have now and the levels we've had previously. They were able to shift based on motivation and other factors as well.
Can you bring up the slide again about what you want to move forward with, what you're?
Can you go backwards? Keep going.
That one or the other one? Which one do you mean?
This, are you talking about this?
But this is just next year.
This is the proposed model.
For just next year?
Yes.
But not the, but the grade nine would be happening the following year.
We shouldn't be looking at the rest of that, right? Just, just the eight.
I just want to see the standards that are just based as being in there, is it all of Algebra I? But in, in, in theory for next year, I mean, this is basically what we're doing. We're just hopefully getting back to sort of where we were with the full year of Algebra I. And that, that was sort of already what the vote of this group was last year.
Well, that's, that's what you already voted, so we're trying to make that happen.
This is how you're trying to get there.
Yes. And I don't know, I think I'm wrong. I think, you know, sixth grade teachers and the seventh grade teachers are still kind of collaborating and trying to figure out what the best standards are. So I'm not sure in two weeks if we're going to be able to say what standards. I think he's asking us to propose something, but again, I really, we would have to do that work with the teachers. Right. And we talked about doing that with them in the summer, you know, because we would have to get them to do that at the end of the school year.
I think what we're looking for is a chart that says, here's the sixth grade standards, here's the seventh grade standards, here's the eighth grade standards. And then how are we taking some of these eighth grade standards and scaffolding them down to the sixth grades that we can see?
That's what I mean, there's some kind of work on that.
I'm not asking you, yeah, I just want to see the vision of what those are.
We can show the current standards.
It's up to you guys to figure out what you think is going to like work best.
But I don't even think it's up to us. I think it's up to our teachers to have input and voice in that. That's, that's my concern, I don't want to be speaking.
I'm confused why we don't know what the standards are. Because in addition to curriculum maps, we also have DESI standards for sixth grade and seventh grade. So I'm not, I, I, I guess I feel like we've done this before. We were doing this in 2019 and before that. So why is it that we're struggling to, um, teach half of Math eight in seventh grade along with seventh grade standards? And then have a class in eighth grade where we're finishing Math eight and doing all of the Algebra I standards? We've done this before. So what has changed about it? I mean, DESI has the standards, we have curriculum maps with standards.
We know what the standards are, but we haven't asked the teachers in grade seven currently to take on the grade eight. That's the movement that we're trying to shift to.
So that wasn't done last summer at the beginning of this year?
They, they started to talk about it and they did a couple of standards. But from what I'm hearing, they don't know that they're going to get as far as they would have liked because we haven't also gone down to sixth grade and tried to shift some of that down.
Okay, so it sounds like we need.
We haven't explicitly gone that far yet, that would be this year's work.
It sounds like we have some more conversations to, to be had with, with the staff, with math staff at, at Rams.
Yes, but without knowing what direction you, I mean, if you're looking to do Algebra I in grade eight, then we have to also, and trying to offer more Algebra to all students. We, we do need some direction so that we can help them do that work.
I don't think I've heard anybody in the committee trying to pull back on what our decision was last year. The decision was to get all of Algebra I offered for those students who are ready for it, right?
Right, for those who are ready for it, it's not necessarily for all.
I don't, I don't hear anyone opposed to having Math eight plus some Algebra standards as much as they can.
Because then that's the work we can at least start.
I don't think we're going to get Algebra for all like next year, like that's not realistic.
And that was our vote last year?
It was not.
No, we never.
I do agree that it requires right now in maths, in, in seventh grade math to be teaching Math eight standards as well, right? And, and probably in sixth grade too, if we're building into a model. I mean, I think what I'm hearing from you is that you would like more students to take all of Algebra I. But in order to do that, we should be building in.
We have to start earlier, exactly.
In sixth grade this year and in seventh grade this year.
Yeah, but we're already, you know, well into January, so.
So I think yes, good.
Well, again, I want to, but before we sort of finalize it, I would like just to see the standards.
We want, I think we're, we're trying to make sure that we have a common understanding of what Algebra I is. That it's not eight standards, but it's all of the standards that we're not leaving for.
So there are four, there are four standards that are not currently in there, we have the right ones.
And I think that's what we'd like to see.
And it's statistics, I believe, quadratic equations. And exponential functions and polynomials. But you're trying to cram in three years, you're really trying to cram four years into three years is what you're doing. You have four years of standards. You have four years of standards that you have to cover in three years.
So I also wonder, so would you reveal progress? I'm assuming that there's a, a very well thought out progression to the way they set the curriculum together. Like there's a story that's told, maybe there's, I don't know if it's cyclical where it returns to some of the standard, uh, taught previously in the year or it just kind of builds on it. But there's a progression. And so how does shifting some things, going to like shifting some of the seventh, seventh grade standards down into sixth grade? What will that, what will that look like for teaching seventh grade and eighth grade curriculum?
So what they're doing though is they're looking at standards that they feel they can bring a next year standard that, that goes together. So they're looking for like natural fits. Like if they're doing a unit, it makes logical sense to put it with that, right? So they would be able to do that using the resources that we have. It's just them both trying to grapple together with what's the best fits together. And it is a lot of work, but, you know, that's why you also saw us trying to increase math tutors and things like that. Because we want to make sure that there might be other opportunities throughout the day to help pick up some of those kids for tier two and three interventions or enrichment, you know, by having more of those staff in the building as well.
So I'm curious about this, but I think the progress in the management is going to be really key to make sure you don't have, we're not increasing the number of kids moving from tier one to tier two as we expand the amount of content that we're providing.
All right, so it sounds like we're partially in the right direction, I just want to be able to assess where we are.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're kind of in the same direction as, as where we've, where we've been. I hear we have a data dashboard that maybe can, can, can help with some of that monitoring.
And we do want to work with the teachers to build both the end of year assessment that will help us. If we want to try to do it a little bit earlier to see if we can shift some students. And also the criteria that we're currently using, other ways to embed other pieces to get student voice in there and things like that that we haven't been able to do necessarily. Okay, cool.
Yeah, moving on. Do we need to vote? Do we have the Except Quarterly Report and the Tech Quarterly Update? For your information?
And it's really just for information. I'm obligated to make sure that I at least share those with you quarterly since you are, you know, since we are members of both Except and Tech.
Sure.
Unless you have questions, it's really just for information.
Okay, any questions?
No.
All right, so then I guess we're done, right?
No.
Okay, so we'll take on a very mundane topic of the 2025, 2026 school year calendar.
Very exciting.
I have sarcastic wish.
Her face is purple. Thank you, Lisa DeLuzio. She sees me.
So I'm just going to, I'll kind of walk you through, because Joni and I met with Lisa today to kind of look at what we did this year. And obviously we know that there was an additional holiday added this year that then put us into the 20th, which is not ideal just because of the fact we have Juneteenth as a day off and then we're coming back for half a day. So I am worried about the low number of attendance we'll have on that day. So ideally, we do want to finish before Juneteenth because that 19th is just a bad time of year. The holiday itself is not the problem, but just if it was in July, it would be great. But it just kind of disrupts learning at the very end of the year when you're trying to keep kids in the building. So we looked at the PD schedule from this year. And you'll see that we proposed again on the 12th of September, a full day PD. I forget, it was a different day, but it was the same weekend on a Friday. And then the second full PD day, we do want to keep with the presidential, not presidential, but the election day, November 4th. Because we have done it different years with the presidential. We like to have it that day, but in other years, we've had it different times. But we found that we've had more opportunities because a lot of districts hold it on election day. So then we can do some work with other districts and bring staff in and out to accommodate more diverse needs of our staff. And then we have the other full day PD. We put on the 16th of January and then one on March 10th. We know that people liked the long weekend for students. We did the 17th last week and then we had the holiday on the 20th, so we're keeping that. So we're trying to keep consistent to what we did this current year. But this would get us out on the 18th of June. Because if you look at the December break, we'd be coming in the 22nd, 23rd, and then we'd be back on the 2nd. And that's really the, this is the only thing we can come up with to get us out before Juneteenth. Otherwise, we'd be coming back for a half day after the weekend and a holiday, a long weekend and holiday, which would be, I just think that would be a waste of-
So with, with the elementary schools now aligned and the high school in Rams still sort of staying aligned and there being a lot of sort of cross talk with them, why would we not look to at least make one, I mean, I still don't understand if we couldn't make one of these full day PDs into two half days and save a day?
It doesn't because we still have, the contract is still 185 days regardless, so. I'm trying to remember how we did it before.
All right, Susan, can I just ask whether or not, so first of all, when I look at that January returning back from the winter break-
Yes.
To come back to school on just that Friday, the 2nd, makes no kind of sense whatsoever. Like nobody's going to come in, it's going to be, you know what I mean, like that just doesn't seem right. So then I wonder whether or not, even if you kept all your PD days the same, whether or not we started the teach opening day for staff earlier and go back, back that up into August.
So the 22nd is what?
Yep.
Yeah.
Or even the 21st.
I think that that would be looked on very unfavorably.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I think that that-
What about moving, so the PD day that you have November 4th, like we didn't typically have them. We only did them on the presidential election because those ones were really big turnout days. I don't know that like on an off cycle year, it's going to be.
So that day, Cynthia, we use a lot for, like especially for our one-off teachers.
We had other districts.
We try to combine PD for them with other districts. And everybody's trying to plan the day off on that.
It's not about the particular day.
The day and then you're trying to make with them.
It was really beneficial for our wellness teachers and other teachers to have that.
Right, real language, wellness, art, of your UAs.
Okay, but hold on, hold on, so let's go back to the half day for a second. So you take the March 10th, let me turn that into a half day, and then say you make February 11th a half day, right? Teachers are currently, would be, teachers and students would be in school on the 11th. They will still be in, both in school on the 11th. That will count as a day. Then you'll have teachers who were in school on the 10th, but no students, but now you'll have both. So wouldn't that, why would that not move the end of the school year up a day?
But can I just point out, so that eliminates, because right now, having full days, your counselors across the districts are all getting together.
Right, so you've got three, you've still got three full PD days.
What are their, what would be their, I'm trying to figure out the message, three full PD days. What are the teachers contractual fourth and fifth days for their 185?
Right, so the opening day on the 25th is one day. Yes, and teachers would still have to do another day.
Yeah, that was, that's what, what got to us there when we did the half days a few years ago and why we added the 181 is because we could only get to four days and it kind of with the HFT, I believe at that point in time, and I'm, I, you know, I would need to get a bit deeper into the research of what we decided at that point.
Yeah, well, when you brought up the half days, it went to 181 days for students because then we would lose another day of time on learning.
Just because of the contractual implications of the contract saying 185 days and then only having 184 days there.
We have found the-
Yeah, but they're in school at seven, you know.
We have found the full days to be efficient from a lot of, just the fact that we've been able to do two full days for paraprofessionals too. You know, it definitely opened up a lot of doors. And that was our other thing from inequity, trying to limit the number of half days we had. There's a lot, there's a lot.
Okay, here's an unpopular one. What about making the 24th a half day?
Why?
Sorry.
Yeah, what month have we talked about?
December.
Nobody would-
I thought I said get rid of Good Friday.
Hey, one snow day, we go from the 18th to the 22nd. One, one snow day, we go from 18th to the 22nd is the last day of school. How many people do you think are showing up on 22nd?
You're not.
Well, that's why I'm not going with the 22nd either.
No, 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 you've avoided it by just saying we have one snow day.
It is so hot. The kids are going to be melting.
It's melting.
Popicles every day.
I'll be the wicked witch. Oh, I'm, no.
I said we back it up in August. I know it's not popular.
Not doing-
Huh? 21st and 22nd. What do we, what choice do we have?
Why do we start on Tuesday rather than starting on Monday?
Because-
The opening day is the 22nd. Back it up in August.
It's just not a favorable schedule.
I mean, it's just, the limitations that we do have, a lot more holidays.
We do have a lot more holidays.
And I respect the why behind that, but it is getting more and more challenging to fit the school year in. And some districts have opted to only recognize federal holidays.
You know it'd be a cool option.
Let's do it.
Just to pilot it for one year. To do a March break, are you listening, people? It's 9:15.
You won't even be here, so you won't-
I have kids still here. A March break instead of the, I know-
If you remember, I said we would have had to do it last year for next year, like that's two years old.
Why?
Because people have already planned vacations.
Oh, you know what? This is public school, all right? So, you know, I'm just saying, a March break.
We just approved in April 2027.
That's fine, so it's a pilot. It's for one year.
But they're going in April then.
Now they'd be missing two weeks of school.
Cynthia, if you had that, you should have voted. So we can do this in 2028.
No, this is for '25, '26. Are they going in '26?
'27.
I'm going with next year. It's coming next year.
Are they going to Italy?
You guys are killing me. Just try it. The power of all of you, won't even give it a shot. You know that a lot of the other private schools have a March break.
So our team dinner contract was the earliest they, teachers can start.
It's not specified.
It is not.
It's 185 days, but you cannot go past June 30th, which is why you-
That's state law, right?
But that's why the, okay, coming back to them coming in 22nd for PD day and starting school on the 25th. It's a Monday, I mean, it makes no sense, start on Monday.
I can tell you one of the reasons we moved, we did have PD one year, we did the full day open, teachers hated and we did the PD, right?
Yes.
Because they're so stressed about getting ready for kids. And then say you can't do it, but then we got really bad feedback and that's why we moved it to the 12th.
But, okay, so, wait, actually, why would we then, forget the PD day, why couldn't we just, they have to be in the day before?
Two days, they have two days. No, no, one day.
Oops, Sarah's warming up to it. Let's keep talking about it.
What?
March break, I'm telling you right now. So I'm not saying no February, I'm saying we do a long weekend over President's Day.
We never talked about March, we never talked about March, we talked about shortened February, we talked about shortened February.
They do have-
And then I said you make up, like, I did talk about, I had a whole, I had a whole sentence.
I don't remember the things I wanted to eat.
Yes, I'm aware.
They have two on the 25th.
That's one thing, you get two days off in February break, you get two days off in April, and then you get a March break.
Putting a March break-
Novel idea.
Why don't we just change the start times again?
Why? Why won't you try it?
So can we make a motion to start teachers on the 22nd, start school on the 25th, you got your day?
As a, as a, as a senior school committee member at an open meeting, you are free to make any motion you would like.
You can't, hold on, don't make it, don't make it, hold on. Because if you do, listen, because when we, if we have five emergency snow days, we're going into the 26th.
Yes, but at the end of the day, we're not going to find five days, so at least get one.
No, but we need more than a buffer.
Well, next year we might not have any snow. You may have also 10 days of snow.
I'm going to come back and haunt you over this. I want you all to know.
What are we haunting over?
Anything, anything and everything, but right now, the fact that you won't even just try a pilot.
Try pilot what?
I told you.
But we surveyed the community, we surveyed the community last year and they didn't want that.
No, 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 we surveyed the community and they said, yes, no, they didn't want it.
No, 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 it was about 60% who did not want it, did not want a shortened February break. It was, it was pretty, I mean, I wouldn't say it was like 80%, but it was, you know.
But they also are very upset when we go far into June because kids aren't learning, it's super hot, they can't-
All right, do you want to pull, do you want to pull about getting rid of non-federal holidays?
I mean, we can start talking about that.
We haven't actually surveyed about it.
How many snow days have we had in the recent past few years on average?
One last year that was-
I don't want to talk about snow days when we're like in peak season right now.
Don't worry, there won't be.
Yeah, right? Since I've been here, we've had, we had one year with electrical outages. We had one, one my first year, and then we have two one year.
The one last year, which everyone called beforehand, I mean, y'all got two inches of snow, was wasted.
And I didn't want to call that one.
I know, but everyone else had, so you did not have a choice. But, I mean, we, all right.
What?
Why don't, why don't we do this?
We don't have to vote on it right this second. This is like the first time we're seeing, we should have seen this in November.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't, do you want to put together a survey?
I would, no. Yeah, right, fine.
Put together a survey and include federal holidays, March, whatever, all March break.
No, I don't want to do that. I just want to do what I'm asking. I don't want to do all that. One option.
Can we cut, do you do something with February break?
Yep.
Or your options are kind of, you do this off of February break or potentially go into June 22nd, 23rd if there's-
School on the 22nd, right?
And come back on June 2nd or Friday.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
So can I just, so the, what school committee's purview is to vote is the first day of school and the last day of school?
Nope, I'm not voting on it yet.
I didn't tell you how to do it today. I'm just telling you what, that's what the requirement is. If you're looking for input and you're saying potentially the 22nd to be able to, no, I'd have to come on the 2nd. Should we throw that out to teachers? Which would you prefer, coming on the 22nd?
Well, that doesn't solve the end of the year, though.
Well, I think we're trying to build a buffer if there is, no, if there is a snow day, we have a buffer so they don't have to come in beyond June 22nd.
Oh, I was thinking about the 2nd because I can't think about-
Nobody's going to come back on the 2nd of January.
So that's what I mean, I'm not sure what you're, is it to shorten the-
No, I would say, okay, so out of the two, multiple issues we have, whether it's a snow day or January 2nd, it makes sense to move it up to Monday and have teachers coming up on Friday, like that.
But to go, we were talking separately here, you do have to think that they would lose that weekend. So there's a lot of people coming back, staff from like the Cape or Maine, so they're coming back that Friday. So in effect, they're losing that Friday and the weekend.
I just, I caution the fact that we have some unhappy people about maths, I mean, the school's start time's changing. You, just as a school committee, you might want to think about how many changes you're making in one year.
They're going to be really unhappy with January, you have January 2nd and June, uh, 22nd.
So which one are you okay upsetting more, or just, if you could just, if you could just without, just state that one.
What I am saying is we need to look at what the data says, and starting on Tuesday makes no sense. That's what the data is telling.
We've started-
We always start on Tuesday.
Part of, the other thing is-
We're not starting on Tuesday, we're starting on a Monday for teachers and Tuesday for-
Can I tell you why we don't like a Monday start for kids in August? Because it's the first week of school, right? They're adjusting to a new schedule and now, you usually put kids in, if you do it after Labor Day, it's a three-day week.
Yeah.
We're doing a four-day week, which is the Friday, doing five-
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and we had the Friday off for professional development.
It's three and a half.
And then we had the long weekend to squeeze our way back into it, but now we have that time.
Because we have all these extras.
There's a lot of extras.
You never really want it first.
I want to put it in.
Start the Tuesday, we're going to, we have a snow day.
Nobody wants to come back the 21st, so I'm saying, I'm saying- March break.
They're melted that day.
So do you want a table to switch it up?
It's nicely with Eid. I bet the folks that have, yeah, right there.
Let's keep it for next discussion.
Table is for now.
Yeah, there's a lot to discuss.
Okay, so the first day of school will be sometime in August.
Yep.
Sometime in June will be ending school.
We can guarantee that the last day will be before June 30th. What did I say?
We like the PD days where they are, right?
I don't, I don't-
No, not really, but, but we're picking up our-
Yeah, I know. I just would rather have our PD days more front loaded in the year than, like, do we have to have one in March? Could we do it?
Well, part of the reason we do in March is because it is a long month.
PD on the vacation.
Yeah, but we have, we used to have no thing in March.
But we have, but we-
The February break, make one of those days a PD day.
We have a lot of short weeks.
So you hate the teachers most, got it, okay. I understand now where you're coming from.
No, we were cutting off the vacation for everyone.
You're right.
But instead of doing that, just make one of the days a PD day and stay off for-
Okay, just for the record, that was Frank.
It was an option.
Frank says that you should come back for PD during February vacation. I'm saying March break for everybody, that's what I'm saying.
Did I put a motion on the table? No, I said it's on the table, no vote.
All right.
But you put it, it's still on the table.
Scene. All right, so what am I doing? You want me to survey people?
No, no, you're going to put together a survey and then we're going to, then we're going to all nitpick what you put together.
What, I can't go throw out a survey monkey on my own?
I don't, I'll talk with Sarah about it.
I know you did.
We surveyed the last year.
I only surveyed them. I just want to give them like my specific answer.
No, I thought we did do that two years ago.
We gave them my, we did not.
I thought we did.
No, we did not. I had Cynthia pilot all over it. You guys were.
No, I thought we said the survey.
We need to go back to this?
If I can find it.
No, I just, we were not even looking at it. I felt no love. I spent a lot of time on that.
Yeah, there was a survey, but yeah, she kind of got over it.
I was salty about it. I was.
August 6th was a good data start.
It did not. Thank you, Tony, for confirming that.
I think my kids are encamped, but it's fine.